Test 1, 2, 1, 2. 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 Test 1, 2, 1, 2.
...
Now it is.
Appreciate your patience. It's just give me another moment while we wait for the town clerk to return. I think it's working now. Yeah, I think it's on. Sure thing. Are you ready to go? Town manager Sudama, ready to begin?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I call this October 24th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording of this meeting. On October 27th, the video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.morrisvillnc.gov or slash government. Councilmember Rabadi is unavoidably detained and let us know that she plans to join us in just a few minutes. At this time, I'd like to recognize our sergeant-at-arms. Sergeant Strickland has 15 years of law enforcement experience, 13 years with the town of Morrisville. She has served on the crisis intervention team and has received Officer of the Year recognition several times. Thank you for being here tonight. And we have a large gathering in the back, so lots of support for some of our presentations later. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by councilmember Al.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow our heads. We come together this evening in the all-America city of Morrisville to lead one of the most diverse, inclusive, and innovative towns in the state of North Carolina in our nation. We pray for our soldiers who defend our freedom every day and for any family who has lost loved ones during the pandemic, any of us, including the 44,000 women who died from breast cancer last year. During this Hindu Heritage Month, let us be grateful for the remarkable contributions of the Hindu community of Morrisville and our state. We are grateful for their devotion, bhakti, and selfless service, seva, to God and their community. These two principles are driving principles behind the construction of the second-largest Hindu temple in the world in Rockville, New Jersey, Babs, swimming around on the luxury dock. We cherish any immigrant community who has left the shores of their homelands to call Morrisville and North Carolina home. Tonight, we pray and stand with Israel and pray for the innocent Israeli and Palestinian citizens, many of them young children, whose lives have been lost as a result of hateful and senseless brutal terrorism. In the midst of two wars in Israel and Ukraine, senseless violence, and extreme political division in our own country, we today are inspired by the Indian tradition of dhushara and bhava, which fill our town with the joys of light and love so desperately we could feel for the world and the community. Finally, I close with remembering the words of the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. Darkness cannot draw out darkness, only light can. Hate cannot draw out hate, only love can. We know that the only light that matters, the only light that can lift us out of the darkness is not the light of a lamp or a fire. It is light among our hearts which burns bright when we preach it. We pray that it will enable each of us to shine within light with our friends and neighbors every day so we can always eliminate the darkness in this. We pray for light. We pray for peace. We pray for love. Amen.
Amen. If you are able, please stand as you recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to recognize town manager Paige for a possible adjustment to our agenda.
Town manager Sudama?
I haven't written correctly, actually. Habit, sorry.
No worries. Thank you. Mayor, I would like to ask that we add a proclamation as item 9C and then push item 9C to 9D. That proclamation is regarding Operation Green Light and we have representatives of our Morrisville Veterans Memorial Group here to receive that. Please.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict with any items on the agenda. Do any council members wish to be recognized at this time? Okay, tonight entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with that change as suggested.
I move that we adopt this evening's agenda.
As amended, correct? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously 6-0. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda: FY24 First Quarter Budget and Capital Project Ordinance Amendments, reappropriation of fund balance from prior year 2023, and approval of the September meeting minutes. Would anyone like to pull any of those for discussion before consideration? I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 6-0 unanimously as well. There are two administrative reports tonight: an FY 2024 First Quarter Financial Report and Winter Advisory Committee Recruitment Report. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions on either of those items? Seeing none, we will continue. Okay, we are at the presentations. We have three presentations tonight, or now four. Retirement recognition of Captain Robbie Stanley and Captain Eric Preddy and a Morrisville Smart Shuttle Year Two Review and the proclamation for Operation Green Light. Nathan Lizinski, Fire Chief, will make the first presentation. Chief.
As you all know, Captain Stanley is retired. He's moving on to bigger and better things. Captain Stanley started for us in 1999. We all know how much his organization has changed. It has grown into a world-class fire department, and we could not have been able to make that happen without you, Captain Stanley. A lot of the things that we've been talking about lately, core values, commitment, integrity, all those things, Captain Stanley embodies, and it really had to make us kind of move into that accredited status, that ISO status. So without your help, without your contribution, without you building the foundation that you helped build for us, we would not be where we are today. And I think I can speak on behalf of the council, the managers, the fire department, and the residents of this community. We owe you a debt, but it's true, really, being here at the beginning, sticking with us. Nobody can ever take your place. As our family moves, comes up, I also want to thank you all, fire staff leaders, the fire addiction, the early life. And you all have given it to us for that time. You have also contributed. And your contributions do not, we don't want to bypass those contributions that you've given to us. So we want to thank you very much. It is hard being a first responders family, and you all get to retire as well.
Thank you so much. Can we get a quick picture with you, Captain, up here as a group? Okay. That sounds nice. Thank you so much, sir. Really appreciate you. Would you like a quick picture with your fire staff up here with you? Fire staff, come on up if you would. We'd love you guys to be part of the picture. If you want to stand up front with them, we'll have your back. You guys are in the front. If you want to just go down one row so we can be a little seen. So if you guys want to get on the first step, we'll be right behind you and we'll try to find a spot in between y'all. Thank you so much. Chief Lizinski pretty much said it all, so on behalf of the residents and the corporations in the town, we're really appreciative. A lot has changed the last few years and he's been an integral part of that, so. At this time, Peter Costa, Police Chief, will make the next presentation.
Most of you know already, I can't stand to read, but I have a lot I want to share with you, a little bit about Eric. So Eric's in his 30th year of law enforcement. 29 of those years are spent in local government, working local police departments. He actually spent a year with the FBI and then decided to come back. He spent many years training folks and really across Durham and the Raleigh area and even Charlotte, he's probably trained or either directly or indirectly thousands of police officers in this 30, 30 years. So you can imagine there's police officers all over this state that Eric has had the opportunity to be a part of their development and their training, their career. Eric holds a master's degree from Gazaga and he also holds a PhD. Where's that from? Old Dominion. Yeah. So we like to call him Doctor Captain. One of the things that you guys may not know about Eric is Eric's actually a very good musician. Plays the guitar, he sings. He probably doesn't want me to share this, but he's also a sailor. He's a captain of his own sailboat. And one thing that I've always loved about Eric and his wife Amy is when they decide they want to do something new, they just do it. They may not have ever done it before and they're so adventurous just to go out and try new things. And I've always admired that with Eric. Eric has been very instrumental to this police department in this town. He was very instrumental and just recently in our last accreditation of helping us get to the point of advanced accreditation, working with Tenaja, very closely with that, which is a huge lift. And without Eric, we probably would not be there. He's brought a lot of, he's been very innovative with our police department. One of the most proud things, when I was appointed chief, Eric and I spent a lot of time together really trying to develop the path that we thought the police department needed to go. And part of that path was being inclusive to all of these women and men that work with us. And when we started our promotional processes, Eric actually brought the idea of including all of our staff into the process. So now when we have interviews and promotional processes, all of our staff are included in that. And they actually get to be a part of weighing in on who the next corporal and sergeant and lieutenant and captain are, which most police departments don't do that. Eric, that was Eric's idea and Eric brought that to the table and it's been huge. And when I speak of that, when I go to different conferences and visit different police departments, the response I get from them is just amazing. They don't believe that we would do something like that. And that's, you know, that's just one very small thing that Eric's brought to, to us. Eric's a dad. He's a friend. He's an amazing husband to his wife Amy. You can ask her. If you don't, if you don't believe her, you can ask Eric. Eric can tell you to. But Eric, I will tell you, I'm not sure we can fill these shoes. I'm going to miss you. I think I can speak on behalf of our entire staff that you will be missed. We know you won't be far away, but we're very proud of you. We do understand what 30 years looks like, a lot of us do, and what it takes to get there. We also want to thank you, Amy, because we understand how hard this man works and the hours that he puts in. Even when he's not here, he's oftentimes working while he's at home. And so we, I've never overlooked that and I hope you know that and I'm very grateful for that. And Amy, I'm very grateful for you to give us Eric and put up with those difficult times and those hours that he puts in. We know that's, we know that can be very hard and get those late-night phone calls. So thank you for that. Thank you for being part of, part of our family. Congratulations on 30 years.
Yes.
Let's go ahead. Get behind him again. Hey, nice to see you. Thanks for being here. Good to see you. No, I got your guys back. We're gonna need, we're gonna need a couple of different rows. How's it going, Cody? Doing okay? Good. We're all just trying to, so everyone try to see the camera. I feel very safe. Want to say a few words? You're welcome to. Yeah, sure. I'll stand close to you so my work.
Real quick, just want to thank this council. For the years that I've been here, the council has been amazing. Really very supportive of this police department and under this place of work. I want to thank the community because I've never seen a community that's so trusting of their police department. And just they always want to come and talk to us and just really be friendly with us. And in return, we want to do the same. We truly appreciate our relationship with them. I want to thank these men who are back here because really that's why I come to work is to help them succeed. And we call each other brothers and sisters and we do that for a reason because truly it's meaningful. And I just want to know that each of you have a place in my heart and that's why I'm here. And the last of my life, without her, I wouldn't be here right here today. So she is the love of my life and keeps me going forward.
Thank you. Those were both very meaningful and the town is much better for having these two gentlemen serving. Thank you all very much. At this time, we have a proclamation. This proclamation is recognizing Operation Green Light for veterans. This proclamation is recognizing Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Morrisville have great respect, admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served in our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas understanding that the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our residents. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas Morrisville seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas Morrisville appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans and declares November 6th through November 12th, 2023 as a time to honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Encouraging its residents in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. Be it further resolved, exterior lighting on selected town buildings will be lighting up green during the week of November 6th through 12th in recognition of the sacrifices of our United States military personnel. So at this time, I'd like to bring up the Chair of our Veterans Memorial Committee, Bob Butler, and anyone else he wishes to receive this proclamation. Thank you for being here, sir. Appreciate you. Yep, we just said hi earlier. Good to see you. Very strong handshake. And that's for you. If you'd like to take a picture and then we'll say a few words. And actually, can this be one with the whole council up here? Because the veterans are so important. Take an extra minute, but I think that'd be nice. Yeah. I'll let you hold it. Would you like to say a few words, Mr. Butler?
Yeah, I really thank you for this, for this proclamation. And I want to introduce Claude Davis, who is also on the Foundation Committee. Claude is actually a Vietnam vet and as you can tell from his hat. Since I have this forum, we're still raising money for the, for the veteran memorial that's going to be across the street. And on the 11th, which is Veterans Day, we're having a 5K walk. So if y'all go on, it's on the town website, the walk information. Register for the walk, get a free t-shirt, you get to see Claude again. So thank you for this, for this proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your efforts.
And if you don't register online, I will take your money and your t-shirt today.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Claude. Okay. At this time, we'll go to our fourth presentation. Caleb Allred, Planner 2, Transportation, will present a Morrisville Smart Shuttle Year 2 Review.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Caleb Allred, Transportation Planner 2, Town. So tonight, we'll be talking about the Morrisville Smart Shuttle Second Year Review. So we have a lot to talk about tonight. So I kind of just wanted to go over kind of the agenda for tonight's presentation. We will have some data analysis and talk through that. We'll talk through the survey results of our most recent survey administered over the summer. Take a look at the past year's projects and what your staff has been working on for the Smart Shuttle. Also look ahead, year three of the Smart Shuttle and beyond. Talk a little bit about the Community Funding Area Program Overview, as well as the future of the Smart Shuttle and answers to some of the questions or hopefully providing some responses to some of the questions y'all have back in February about, about the Smart Shuttle. So before we dive into the details of the data, so key, key highlights to keep in mind from that we've noticed. Ridership is very strong, but it does fluctuate throughout the year. And that's the same both for the first year and the second year of service. Our program does continue to perform well against our peer programs in the community funding area. And we'll look at, look at some of their numbers as well and compare them. The Smart Shuttle tends to be, tends to be in use frequently throughout the day. So there's very little time where it's dwelling, waiting for rides to be booked. It's, it's on the road very, very constantly and consistently throughout the day. So over time, as we've gotten, you know, more established with the program, we have made minor improvements as we see them come, come up, including, you know, addressing some technology things over time, addressing the algorithm, which I know you, you are all familiar with. And, and those tend to increase the services efficiency over time. And so we're very proud of that. And then, you know, kind of similar to the, the previous year's data suggests shopping centers and public facilities are very popular destinations for the Smart Shuttle. But those, the travel to those office parks are less popular with the existing service. So there's a lot going on on this slide. So just to walk everybody through what we're looking at. This is quarterly data from the start of service in October 2021. Staff has created a more, a performance metrics to monitor. Some of those performance metrics have targets associated with them for staff to, to continue to monitor and, and kind of keep, keep pace with those targets. You'll see a lot of green and red on the slide. Green indicates that from one quarter to the next, we've had growth. And, and red means that there's a regression. You'll notice at least with the on-time performance that the arrows are pointing down and they're, they're green. That indicates that, you know, we're, we're getting closer to our ETA. The, the actual arrival time, arrival time is closer to the ETA than it was the previous quarter. And then I also want to note, you know, we, we did have that algorithm change. I know council's familiar with that for everybody else in the room. On, in June of this year, the Smart Shuttle has an algorithm that dictates when to pick up folks. And so if you say, hey, I want a ride, you book that ride or you, you put in that ride request. The algorithm is going to say, can I pick, can the shuttle pick this person up within a certain amount of time? If it's not able to pick that person up in that certain amount of time, you'll get a seat unavailable message. So in June, staff amended that algorithm from a 40 minutes ETA to a 60 minute ETA with the goal of being able to provide more booking opportunities for folks on the shuttle. And so Q1 in the far right column is the first quarter in which that was fully implemented. So that's just, just something to note for the, for the group. So looking through the numbers, that average boardings per hour, as, as noted on the previous slide, we have, you know, we're starting out at 2.18 boardings per hour. We're going all the way to 4.1. You know, there is fluctuation in there. Excuse me. But that is a, that is a positive trend line. Similarly, shared ride percentage goes up over time. You see similar regressions in each quarter than the boardings per hour. If you think about it, that makes sense. Because the more boardings you have, the more opportunities you have to have shared rides. On-time performance, I mentioned this a little bit before. This is the, you know, when you get a booking opportunity, you have an ETA. So we're looking at how close is that ETA to the actual arrival time? And so we've seen that also improve. And that comes back to making those minor improvements over time, getting the shuttle more on pace where it's picking folks up in the amount of time that it says it's going to pick them up. And then the seat unavailable message, our goal is 8% or below 8% seat unavailable messaging. And so we have that kind of all over the place, the first many quarters until the most recent quarter, which had dipped below 7%. And again, that is the first quarter with that ETA, that maximum ETA adjustment. So we have a couple of more metrics that we, we monitor. Cost per boarding, you see that number come down as well, following that boardings per hour. And that makes sense because, you know, where it's, the more boardings you have, the, it kind of correlates. The difference here that I'll note is that each fiscal year, our contract with Go Carry is renegotiated and they have hourly rates that change, that go up every year based on inflation, based on driver pay, things of that nature. So it's not a direct correlation. We do see that go up slightly, but on the whole, it seemed to be coming down. And I, Q1, it says TVD. I didn't have those numbers quite yet, but I was able to pull that for y'all. It's $29.11. So it's actually gone down from Q4 of FY23 as well. We have a couple of other metrics that don't have targets. They're just things to note. One of which is average walking distance. This is in feet. So that's someone books a ride from somewhere and the algorithm or the app gives them walking directions to their node. What's the average walking distance for them? And so it looks like it fluctuates from 879 to 696. But it does, it doesn't really follow a clear trend line. And then out of service hours as well, that, that tends to fluctuate from 3% to 6%. So looking at the ridership between years for each month of the year. And this goes from October to September because obviously we started in October. So you'll notice that the, the second year of service and, and just to let folks know, the, the blue is the first year and the red is the second year of service for the next couple of slides. So what we notice is that the first year of service is consistently has lower ridership than the second year with the exception of that August, the month of August. And so when you look at it as a whole, our first year, we have about 17,000 rides. Our second year, a little over, almost 22,000 rides, a 28% increase year over year. Positive numbers. Our boardings per hour for weekdays, so we split up weekdays and weekends. We have different service hours during the week. We also have an additional shuttle on, on the road during the week. So that's highlighted in green on the screen here. And what we notice is that there is only one hour throughout the weekday. Sorry, two hours throughout the weekday, that four to five and that seven to eight PM timeframe in which there were more rides in the first year than the second year. All the other, all the other hours of the day, the second year is outperforming the first year. And so that seat unavailable messaging is something that staff looks really closely at. And so for the weekdays, that seat unavailable in the first year is 6%. The second year is 7%. That makes sense. We have higher ridership in the second year. But since we made that algorithm change, it's dropped to 4.6%. And again, that algorithm change occurred on, on June 14th of this year. Sticking with our same color scheme, first year is blue, second year is red. We have our Saturday and Sunday services, service. Again, those are split up because Saturday runs eight to eight and Sunday runs eight to seven. So our, and so for Saturday service, it looks like our, let's see, 12 to one and seven to eight PM timeframes had higher ridership in the first year, otherwise higher ridership throughout in the second year. And that seat unavailable is much higher than our, our our goal of 8% in both years, 16.1% the first year and 16.4% the second year. That algorithm change slightly impacted it. We're down to 14.5% in the first quarter. And so that's, that is a pos, some positive movement on that front. Sundays, I'm looking at it, I think that one to two PM time slot has higher ridership. That five to six looks like it has higher ridership too in the first year, but otherwise the second year is outperforming in every other hour of the day on Sundays. Again, 15.2% seat unavailable the first year, second year is 10.5%. And then that algorithm change has further dropped it to 9.2%. So looking at ridership per node, and these are organized in order of most popular in the second year. We see a trend for pickups and drop-offs. Pickups, Park West Village 2, Morrisville Carpenter Road, Wake Tech, McCrimmon Corners, Regional Transit Center, Food Hub, Park West Village 1. All of those are either institutions, institutional uses or shopping centers. Our least popular are those two perimeter park nodes, which is similar to, to the presentation you heard in February. Drop-offs are similar. Those first handful of nodes are are institutional or shopping centers. And again, Park, Perimeter Park North and Perimeter Park South are in the bottom three of those, of this category as well. So we talked a little bit about peer communities and, and this is an interesting, some interesting numbers that we're working with. So average boardings per hour. We have available data for our peers in the CFAP, the Community Funding Area Program. We'll talk a little bit about what that program is in a little bit. But from the second year of our service, looking at everybody else's ridership, with the exception of Q1, I don't have their numbers yet for, for our peers. But Apex, Route 1 and Wake Forest Reverse Loop are both fixed route services. And we outperform, or the Morrisville Smart Shuttle outperforms both of those services each quarter. So that's something to be noteworthy of, that despite it being a fixed route, the Smart Shuttle has the demand there to outperform them. And, and just to note, the reason why there aren't Go Raleigh or Go Carry services on this chart is because Go Carry and Go Raleigh are not, they, they do not qualify for Community Funding Area Program funds. So that's just something, something to note, why you're not seeing more than just these three. So looking at the operating budget for the Smart Shuttle, you know, in the, so in FY22, everything in bold here is already allocated funding, already budgeted funding. And so what you see here is in our anticipated cost is our, is our either budgeted cost or a 5% increase year over year for future costs. Accounting for things like inflation, driver pay, things like that. Our town share is half of that because the CFAP refunds reimburses 50% of the, the town's contribution. And then the total spent to date is historically in previous years is how much the town has spent. And then this year, obviously it's much lower because we still have months that we have not accounted for where we have not accrued payments for. And so to note here, you know, the FY25 through 28, it's a, staff has assumed a 5% annual increase. You know, that could fluctuate depending on a number of factors, but that's, that's just an average. Let's see here, I have my notes at the bottom. This does not include capital cost. So the, the capital funding is a pool of money. It is not annually distributed to the town. And that pool of money was set to expire at September 30th of this year, but staff were able to get that bumped to December 31st of 2025. And so that's why you're not seeing those numbers on here. This is just operating cost. So over the summer, staff conducted a, a survey of, of the Smart Shuttle. Purpose to understand a lot of what we talked about in February. Who uses the shuttle? What's their age? Do they have access to a car? Things like that. As well as to understand how they perceive the Smart Shuttle. How's the community perceive the Smart Shuttle and what things do they think that we can improve? With either the Smart Shuttle or transit in general. That timeframe was July 1st to August 31st that, that survey was open. And staff developed two surveys. One survey, what we called the in-app survey. We have to assume that when we administer a survey through the app, that folks at least know of the Smart Shuttle, right? They've already had the app downloaded. They already have an account created. So that survey, the language is tweaked just a little bit to make that assumption that they already know about it. Out of the 353 responses, that's 8.4% of the total accounts created to date. Which staff are, that's a reasonable number for, for staff. The outside app survey, we had 40 responses. Through the help of Communications Department, that, that survey was pushed out through the town's means of communicating with, with residents. And that survey, of course, is designed for folks who may or may not be familiar with the survey, the service. So some of those in-app survey responses. Do you have access to a car? You're able to drive independently? So what we found is regardless of age, 18 or younger or older than 18, most folks don't have access to a car. What does that mean? That means that folks are using the Smart Shuttle likely for their means of transportation to get around. Of course, some respondents didn't provide their age, those 82, 82 folks, or chose not to share if they had access. or chose not to share if they had access to a car. Um, but uh, this is among the folks who did share both of those um, with us. Um, so some other takeaways from the in-app survey. Um, everything in red indicates that it's from folks who said that they were either occasional or frequent riders of the service. Everything in green is results from folks who said they rode once or that they never rode the service. And so what we find is that folks who have ridden the service at least occasionally, if not frequently, had a slightly better view of the shuttle, a three point nine out of five star rating. Um, which makes sense because folks are probably more likely to use it if they like it. Um, and what we also found that was very interesting is that uh, those occasional or frequent riders, the vast majority of them are at, are uh, fifty years or young, or I guess, under fifty years of age. And then a question of uh, kind of holistically from everyone, what changes would you recommend to improve the service? Most folks said more stops, faster pickup times, more consistent E P A and more regional connections. Those interesting responses to to help us think about the future of of our transit system. So some r- results from that outside app survey. Um, you know, how frequently have you ridden the shuttle? Most folks have occasionally ridden it. Um, and and the the second largest group was folks who have never ridden the shuttle. Most folks were more satisfied than the in-app survey at four point one um, out of five stars. Excuse me. Um, and then similar to the in-app survey, most most folks folks who responded were between the ages of eighteen and fifty. Um, and then very interesting in comparison to the prior survey, um, or the the in-app survey is that most folks in in this survey respond, uh, respondents, they do have access to a car. Seventy six, almost seventy seven percent of folks did have access to a car that they were able to drive themselves. So some takeaways from the surveys, most respondents are at least occasional riders. Most fox, uh, most folks want more stops, reliability, and they want more regional connections. Most folks don't really have access to a car, so this is likely their main source of transportation. And the more frequent riders tend to be under the age of of, uh, I guess forty nine or under. Um, and this was a really interesting uh, amount of our i- information from our results. Um, out of the in-app surveys, folks who rode at once or never. What is keeping you from riding the shuttle more frequently? Most popular answers were there are not enough stops, there are not enough regional connections. I cannot book the shuttle when I need it. That goes back to that seat unavailable messaging, where the shuttle takes too long. And so those are, again, interesting results for us to think about when we're thinking of of uh, our service. So some things we've been doing in the past year, um, since October of last year. But can, been completing a lot of amenity improvements. Um, a shelter and a bike rack were installed in Morseville Carpenter Road, right down the road here in the fall of twenty twenty two. Um, some ongoing improvements that are, oh, I'm sorry. And um, six benches and five back, bike racks were um, and one node relocation on Town Hall Drive occurred in late summer of this year. Um, uh, and then ongoing improvements, what we're looking at kind of in the future. Um, looking into the possibility of new nodes on Church Street and McCrimmon Parkway. Continuing to look at the possibility of adding benches where where we can, where uh, feasible, given, you know, site constraints. Do we have enough ride away? Do we have enough space? My apologies. And then we're working with our I T department um, to uh, connecting our I T department and and via transportation, our app developer, to get the Morseville app, uh, the Smart Shuttle app integrated into the Morseville app. So those are ongoing things that we're looking to do, um, that we're continuing to work toward in in F Y twenty four. Sorry, the third year of service. So other things that that we've been working on, um, so every year, there are service operating agreements that are contin- that we have to renegotiate and continue. So those occurred um, as normal. Um, and again, the the capital funding agreement was set to expire on September thirtieth and and staff were able to get that pushed to December thirty first of twenty twenty five. Uh, so app updates, again, that maximum E T A was extended from forty to sixty minutes on June fourteenth. Staff, uh, town staff went to Earth Day, Spring Fest, Bike Rodeo, July third, and Trick or Treat the Trail to market the Smart Shuttle. And then in collaboration with Communications Department, we've uh, we've created a a marketing schedule that we can put out through those town forums throughout the year to continue to to market the shuttle. So talking a little bit about funding mechanism in the Community Funding Area Program, this program is a part of the Wake Transit Program. It's available to eleven municipalities, again, not Raleigh, not Cary, but all the other municipalities in Wake County. That funding is to fund, there, that that funding pool is to fund a maximum of fifty percent of transit planning, operations, and infrastructure investment. And to date, the town has received funding for the public transit study. Um, ongoing Smart Shuttle operations as well as capital improvements, again, that one, that that funding um, pool was extended to a deadline of December of twenty twenty five. And then the Community Funding Area does have performance timelines, so our first two years are a pilot program where we're kind of getting our feet uh, under us, um, and working toward um, kind of s- uh, solidifying the service in the community. Our four-year review is um, is where we need to meet our com- our C F A P minimum standards, um, which are on the, on the screen here. So we, uh, our revenue surf is service hours, a little different than cer- regular service hours, those will be, um, depending on. You could think of that as um, each driver that's paid an hour. So if we have two shuttles on the road for one service hour, that's two revenue hours because we're paying two drivers to be on the road. Um, so we do not have any standards for microtransit in the C F A P. So we don't have to meet those standards. We do provide information on that regardless. Ridership, we don't have minimum standards. Passenger boardings per revenue hour, um, we have to meet a one point five uh, passengers per revenue hour. Of course, we're exceeding that um, ea- in each quarter since launch. Excuse me. And then operating cost per passenger boarding. And again, that is um, depends on a new, uh, number of factors, including ridership and the cost per per hour. Um, and and of course, that T V D is twenty nine dollars and eleven cents for for Q one of F Y twenty four. Um, and just to note, that minimum standard of thirty dollars, it's, it's, our goal is to get under thirty dollars an hour. So, you know, I know council had asked back in February for some recommendations on the future of the service. And so before we get to those recommendations of moving forward, just to talk through a little bit of what staff's uh, uh, thought process was and things to consider. So things that we know about microtransi- or macrotransit, not just our own, but microtransit in general, is that there are service reliability issues that goes back to that seat unavailable. That goes back to how many folks are in the queue and does it get to me on time? Um, and because of those reliability, can I book a ride? Am I going to get a ride? Folks don't tend to want to use it for commuting, right? Because I have to get to work on time. I know I need to get there at a certain time. I can't be late. So capacity issues, um, or capacity arising from, and when you need more, when you have the demand and you need to fit the capacity with the service, we've uh, adjusted the algorithm. But outside of the algorithm, you have to add more vehicles, right? Yeah, for each, you know, when you have higher demand, you need to add more vehicles. It's not something that just comes around and picks folks up on a set schedule. Um, and that obviously increases the cost. And then we know um, that it's not conducive for transporting large groups of people. I know we we've talked about that in the past as well. Some other considerations, um, so a part of that Community Funding Area Program is the possibility after your four years of being completely funded by Wake Transit. That has never happened. The Smart Shuttle is the first program to go through C F A P, so we are the guinea pigs. Um, and so what what staff is looking for, um, as we talk with Campo and as we go through this process is, we want to know what that looks like to be rolled in. So those are the questions as we get into those meetings with Campo that we're asking as staff. And some of those example questions for you are, does the town maintain control of the program? You know, if you guys fund it, do we still have decision-making authority? Does branding stay the same? I know everybody likes the Smart Shuttle branding. Do we have to change that or do we get to keep it the same? Um, those are things that that are to be considered, and if you were to um, say, go with a different service model, you'd have to restart that four-year process. So that, you know, we restart in year one, we go four years, and then we have this conversation with them again. Um, so just things to consider when we're thinking about this. So staff recommendation for the future of the service. Maintain existing service model and to continue to evaluate the service as it, as it matures. At the same time, um, exploring funding through the C F A P, again, funding, planning efforts um, to study alternative service models. An example would be fixed route, and that's something we talked about in February. And then the third is, is, you know, we have those seat unavaleables on Saturday, Sunday. We are curious to know council's opinion about the future service interest and future, um, excuse me. Do you, do y'all want to add vehicles to the, to the service? Do you want to keep it the same? Are those things that you would like us to explore in the budget cycle? Um, and then throughout the whole process, obviously, we're continuing to have conversations with Campo about the future of uh, of our funding and and what does it look like to be included in that Wake Transit plan? So that we can, you know, uh, be able to approach you with that as well. And with that, I'm happy to hear your thoughts or take questions.
Okay, I see some people have some questions, but first I'd like to welcome, um, council member, The Body, who's actually been here for a while, but I want to give you the opportunity. Uh, is there any uh, conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict of interest or anything on the agenda for you? No, okay, great. Uh, first I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Skargun Johnson.
Thank you, and thank you Caleb for this presentation. There's a lot of good uh, data in here. I have a few questions. Um, you know, where you made that algorithm change and the pers- the number of percentage seat unavailable decreased. Is there any data that says, out of that number, did the individual come back and book a ride?
So basically, when they got that request, did they end up booking? Um, so the, the, I would say the data is clear that we had, do have that general trend of of higher ridership. Um, but it's not clear whether or not, if the folks would have gotten the seat unavailable, but they now are getting a request, if those folks are taking that ride. I can't see, um, I I am unable to see in the data whether or not they would have got a seat unavailable.
Yeah, I guess really my question pertains to if by increasing it from forty to sixty percent, the people that that opened up to, did they indeed book a ride? Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
If there, the lead time was fifty minutes, did they book a ride?
Sure, um, and unfortunately, that's something that we don't have information on um, right now.
You know, if it's possible, that would be interesting to know. Like what, you know, when people are given certain uh, wait times, what are the wait times that are acceptable to individuals for them to book? All right, um. So you, in the slides, it mentioned the Wait Transit Plan. But then staff recommends staying with the um, Community Funding Area Program. But the slides didn't really talk about, well, why? What are there, what are the pros and cons of rolling it into the Wait Transit Plan?
That's a great question. That's actually because it hasn't been done before, that those are questions that we also as staff want to know the answer to. Um, so it's not necessarily that staff recommends staying in the C F A P. It's that, that's our option right now, and as we learn more about that transition, um, we'll be sure to to update you on what we find.
Because I saw funded at a hundred percent.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
And, and then the questions that you have down here below, does the town maintain control of the program? Does branding stay the same? Are you indicating that if we were to roll it into the Wait Transit Plan, that branding would change and the town wouldn't have control of the program?
The, again, those are, those are kind of examples that that we can share with y'all that we also want to know. Um, before we make any recommendations to to y'all, um, we'd like to know those answers as well.
All right, uh, you're considering additional nodes, one on McCrimmon. Do you know where along McCrimmon you're thinking?
So I think right now, um, there is consideration for the existing Go Triangle stops in McCrimmon. Uh, but that's, those are ongoing conversations with Go Triangle.
Okay, I'm trying to remember where the existing stops are. I know there's some, like, close to the Wait Competition Center.
Exactly, and so we're, we're evaluating the merits of of adding those nodes.
Okay, what about, um, Church? Has there been thought given to where along Church Street?
There has been, again, nothing, nothing has been finalized, um, but probably north of of Church Street Park.
I think, uh, North Street Park is, uh, north of Church Street Park is good, but I think both areas even south of McCrimmon is viable option as as well. Um, so what about, like, I know you guys are, you uh, talked about eventually looking at a fixed route. Would you guys look at having one bus do a fixed route and the other on demand?
So that's something that, um, and my apologies for not being more clear. That, that's something that that study would, that we're hoping a study would shed light on. Um, and that he, it's kind of prepping us that if we do go back to C F A P and we ask for funding for another service model, we're going to have to have a study anyway. So this is, this is a, an attempt to to look into all of those questions that you have, and of course, staff has those same questions as well.
All right, which kind of leads me to one of my other questions. Is restarting the service model with the C F A P a bad thing? Because you said if you change the service model, you would have to restart the C F A P. Is that?
Not necessarily bad. Um, it's just those weighing those pros and cons of, you know, if you restart, you also restart the timeline on potentially becoming part of that transit. Again, you know, that, those are decisions that y'all would need to make up. Do we want to be in Wake Transit? Once we learn more information, of course, to share with you.
Okay, because I think, um, and you alluded to this in your presentation. Um, you know, I think not having a fixed route on a schedule is a major inhibitor for um, commuters using the shuttle. And it's not just commuters, but also students going to Wait Tech, either for the high school or the community college. Um, so I, it, and I think if you, we had a fixed route or some other way of increasing the reliability of knowing what the time is going to be, our ridership would increase. I mean, I know for me personally, that's one of the main reasons why I don't ride the shuttle more often. Um, and I know that was a major inhibitor for my son to use it to get to school. Because he would have had to get to the Regional Transit Center by a certain time to pick a um, bus up there. And his school happened to have a bus, a Go Triangle bus stop right outside his school, which a lot of kids took. But without having that reliable uh, transportation besides mom's car from Kitts Creek to the Transit Center, it really, you know, he ended up never using it. All right, my last question before the other council members kill me. Um, why are the two Park West stops so close together? That, I, I think one of them needs to be on the other side of Cary Parkway. They're just like within. They're just like within, I don't know if it's a hundred feet or two hundred feet.
Fifty-four, like on the other side where is that a food line over there? And that
No, it's where the theater is.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Planet Fitness or Lifetime Fitness.
So the the original, to answer your question, the goal of when we were evaluating, when we were evaluating putting those nodes out there on at Park West Village, we had to stay on fifty-four. But we wanted to pop offer folks the most the most opportunity to access the site, recognizing that it's a huge site. And so those two locations are existing transit stops that we knew that we could utilize their infrastructure. And so those those two locations were were selected for that reason.
They're they're a very short walking distance apart from each other. And I'm pretty sure I saw an existing Go Cary stop on Chapahoe Road on the other side of Cary Parkway.
Sure, we can certainly, you know, if that's the interest of the council, we can certainly.
Throwing it out there, when I drive by those two stops, it looks silly because they are so close together.
Sure.
But then for people that may be like wanting to go to the theater, they have to cross that busy road to get to one of the other stops. That's it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Skarregge Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Love the presentation. You did a really thorough job, very thoughtfully laid out the problem, the issue and the recommendation. And it helped validate some of my assumptions about people that would need to go to work. The the current state of the shuttle does not allow that reliability and therefore it's riskier sometimes to take the shuttle than it would be to take it to school or take it to work on a regular basis. This really is novel in the the triangle, you know, and for Wait County. So we are kind of experimenting with the the innovator. And the algorithm that you adjusted just mid-year, it'd be interesting to see if that improves the number of passengers that are taking the shuttle at a time. Now, reading some of your metrics, there's about four individuals taking a ride an hour. Is that what that means? Does that mean they're on the bus at the same time? Or is it just the number of rides per hour?
It would be the number of rides per hour. So they could be on the shuttle at the same time. But we know, what we know is within that that revenue hour of that one vehicle, it's picking up four point one folks per hour.
So when we have multiple people on the shuttle, does that mean that they're a party of two or a party of three? Or the application can handle picking up people on the way?
It can, there's a that that's another, so there are two kind of algorithmic programs that are working together. It's the maximum ETA and also the detour time. We believe the detour is about twenty, twenty-five minute detour. And so that's saying, okay, we have all these folks in the queue. Can we, you know, we just got a request in, can we veer off course and not push off their time more than twenty-five minutes to go pick up this other person? That's what that means. But I think to answer your question, if I heard it correctly, is that four point one rides per hour? That does include individuals that are booked under one account. Or, you know, if there's, say, you have a family of four and they're booked under one account, all four of those folks are being counted in this metric.
That's helpful. That just means that you've kind of aggregated the number of people per, you know, to take it down another level is to be really looking at whether the algorithm is allowing for second riders in the same shuttle when someone is riding it versus, you know, just having my whole family come at one time and take the shuttle at one time. So I I am concerned that we're not allow allowing enough capacity on these shuttles. And my hesitancy is if we do want to introduce a route like Councilmember Fender mentioned, we really do need a dedicated shuttle that would be doing a route. And if we only have one that's using the node system and one that's doing a route, we aren't really able to grow the nodes and the flexibility. It seems like if we were to pursue a route, I would like to look into purchasing a dedicated vehicle for a route. Because that would be a different algorithm. It would be, you know, looking at how many people can we, you know, service on a route that would be of the top places to employment centers, maybe that or schools, that's where we'd start kind of thing. But I don't see taking one of these shuttles off for a route if that's going to be causing some issues perhaps. The other thing is looking at the study and trying to understand where we have some gaps is really about what we think the future of ridership should be with the Morrisville Transit Program. In my mind, I think people that are unable to drive a car, this is a perfect opportunity for them to be able to move around the town. I wonder how we can get more nodes so we can allow for more flexibility. We have a healthcare building coming online in Morrisville. And in the future, that would be a great opportunity to have a stop there to help people in the town access high quality healthcare. Food, more food locations to help people get what they need in food. Other town amenities are parks, ensuring that they have access to the parks. So there's a lot of potential good nodes that are just naturally helping the quality of life of people. And how do we properly prioritize and monetize those kind of things? I'm interested in because I I see a lack of seniors in the study actively taking part. And I was trying to, you know, as I'm listening, one of the important things for seniors are if they have an appointment, they need some more reliability. And also mobility. If the stops are really far from where they need to go, they're not going to take the shuttle because the walking might not be available to them. Or they might not be able to feel comfortable crossing a street safely. So if we add more nodes within the town, that the safety for people of all ages will be improved as well. So again, I am not thinking about the big budget impact of this. I'm just thinking for the future, what would good look like or fantastic look like?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by myself, please.
Thanks, Caleb. That's all I've indicated, good presentation, good stats. My question is on the vague transit plan funded hundred percent. Why, you know, do we want to have control by paying fifty percent? If this plan will open up opportunities of Morrisville residents to go over and beyond Morrisville?
That that is a fair question, and I think that's where we get in the pros and cons of something like that. And so that's where, you know, once staff finds out more information, we can provide you with that, of course.
Yeah, because there's always a lot of questions about like Cary or Morrisville or those kind of things, you know, like might be that is an opportunity that we can share with Cary too, because Cary has, you know, does cater. So by giving this to their people, it opens up for them too, you know, like likewise, because it's the transit plan, which is local. And I'm assuming, will it still be like the microtransit when it goes into vague transit plan? Or will it change into a different plan?
That's a good question that we can certainly inquire about. That's a great question, yeah. I assumed it would be the smart shuttle, but
Yeah, because they may have a different funding models and make it a fixed route. I don't know, so like, when will you get all these answers?
That's a good question.
Who who do you have to ask, like, you know, that's where my let me rephrase it.
So as as we get closer to that four-year evaluation, I suspect we'll be having many conversations with Campo of what does this look like? What does this being wrapped in look like? And I think that's where and I think that's where we can, we can figure out those answers and provide it to you.
Michelle Stevill, planning director, just wanted to chime in for a second. It's not that we're not asking questions as we got towards the end of our two-year pilot. And we are hearing for annual targets, if there's one of these wait transit plans as a possibility. We're asking questions, but it goes back to what planner already said earlier, we're the first ones from the Guinea pigs. So as we're asking questions, I think a lot of internal conversations are happening on the other side. And so Campo's kind of figuring it out as well, kind of as we go along. I do want to note as well, the discussion about fixed route, it's definitely an interesting one. Definitely something that we have our eye on. I just want to make sure council understands that if we decide to go in that direction, we need to do some form of a study evaluation and reapply for that grant. It's not a given that we would get a grant and that fifty percent match would continue. We'd have to make a a new application for that because it would be a fundamental change.
I have two questions more. The other question is, if you look at the ridership, it's not more than four. You know, is that my analysis, like average of four?
Average. So it's an average of four point one rides per boarding?
And what is the highest and what's the lowest there?
Of for the quarter?
Yeah, min-max.
I don't have those numbers offhand, we can certainly provide those to you.
The reason I was asking is if if the average is like four, if it is max of say ten, then that's a different thing. If the average is around four most of the time, then have we considered like Uber Transit? Instead of like a smart shuttle, it's too expensive to run a whole bus of twenty-five people, like capacity for one person. I think last time I remember you, you had mentioned it's like, what, fifty dollars? Like still, we are a dead ballpark trip, that's what we are paying.
So for quarter one of FY twenty-four was twenty, twenty-nine dollars. That was the total cost, not including the reimbursement. But I would say on average about thirty, about thirty dollars. And and to kind of hopefully answer some of your question, I'm remembering this slide here, we have our weekday boardings per hour. And so it goes up to, I guess in year one, we had between four and five, six point nine. And then the highest for year two was six point seven. So that's kind of our peaks for
You know, even if that's the case, right, like a small minivan, you know, like, is that a better buck for the money to go faster mobility and go quicker? Because some towns like Colorado and others, they use Uber Transit as, you know, one of the features. So just wanted to see if that exploration, still a smart shuttle are the word, you know, but faster. It doesn't have to be a big bulky bus carrying one person in. And the third thing is the algorithm. Do you have anything in the algorithm, say, I am booking, say, from Breckenridge and I have ten people coming with me? Will that give a preference in the order because I'm trying to get more people? Because if you're picking one all the way somewhere and then, you know, for us, it's the best buck for the money. You know, is there certain criterias for that?
That's a great question. To my knowledge, no, we only have two, those two kind of algorithmic formulas that are working in tandem. And and it doesn't consider that, you know, you have ten people in your booking request. Whereas other folks in the queue have one or two people. It's kind of an order of request time.
I get it, but I think should we not give some priority on that too? Because the idea is to move more people, you know, that's just a food for thought. And and about the algorithm, right, like you said, you have two fixed algorithms, but how? It's a world of machine learning nowadays, you know, like have they been optimized, you know, to ensure what's the best routes? Because if they're doing a model, then I I want to know which algorithm model are they using? Because that's my bread and butter we do on a daily basis. I just want to see the optimal values coming out of it.
Sure, so VIA Transportation is our technology provider. That those algorithms that were originally established, obviously, we've we've updated one of them is a via standard protocol. I don't actually know the kind of the background of where their routing software comes, you know, where their routing algorithm comes from.
Yeah, I I don't want to go rabbit hole, but I think I would be more happy to talk to them because I really want to dig in on the algorithm they're using and the models, mission learning models they're using. Because that that would basically answer many of the questions of efficiency.
Sure, we can certainly get those answers for you.
That's all, thank you.
Myself and Councilmember Rao, kind of building upon what Councilmember Garamella said. So when you're booking a ride, do you say there's other passengers with you? There is the opportunity?
I think we go up to ten, it's either eight or ten riders that you can book with you in one trip. So if you wanted to bring up to like ten people with you, it's certainly
This is a really good discussion after two years. We're gonna have more discussions over the next couple of years. But I'd be interested in knowing if staff believes that we could finish this four years as a smart shuttle on demand. But also, at this point, initiate a second service model for a fixed route now. So our town would have two going on simultaneously. So we don't have to replace one and give up the on-demand.
That is a good question, and I believe that the CFAP only allows for one application at a time per community.
So that's something that Campo might be able to approve.
All right, not sorry, I guess application being one service.
Model.
Yeah. Exactly, like a whole thing, one at a time.
So since we're the Guinea pig, it might be an opportunity to try something new and different and add to that. Because I think there might be an opportunity for a fixed route. Cary already has a couple of stops within Morrisville, so working with them to see if they just want to enhance one of theirs, add more stops within Morrisville. That could essentially be our fixed route. I like the idea of essentially turning it over at a hundred percent on their dime. If we can provide the service to our customers, I don't really care what the bus says on the outside, as long as people are getting where they need to go. I really like the idea of adding a couple more stops on McCrimmon, especially if they're tied with Go Triangle stops. Because right now, just Park West Village and the regional transit centers are where we can meet up with other bus routes. Is that correct?
With the addition of of the Wake Tech, Wake Tech also
Wake Tech also has a shared spot.
Correct.
So anything we can do to connect with more of the outside Morrisville, I think is a plus. So if we can give those a little bit more priority when we're adding new nodes. And I know that we'd love to just add all the nodes in the world and add another bus on Saturdays and Sundays. And I think it's worthwhile as people continue to adopt it, but it's gonna take resources. So that's just my general thoughts. I like to keep this moving forward and I think this is, we're going in the right direction right now. Council, so I didn't really have any questions to answer, I was just sharing my thoughts. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Abadi, please.
Just a couple of questions. When we said Bob, access to Church Street, I couldn't remember on the, the Shiloh Grove been mentioned? Is that is that a possible node? I've gotten some residents out there asking about.
Shiloh Grove is is the neighborhood just north of Park.
Yeah.
That is the general location.
Okay, yeah, because I got a couple of residents that contacted me about that. To pick up on Councilmember Garamella's questions about, you know, the machine learning and the algorithm, how interconnected is this with our smart city initiatives? Is this data being available on the mobile app that we're developing so that residents? Maybe that's already going on, it just was.
Sure, so that is, our IT department is in communication with VIA on getting I'm picking up that you're referring to the data part of it.
The data, yeah.
So that is something that our ID department is working with VIA on. And of course, the smart shuttle And of course, the smart shuttle team is helping facilitate those conversations.
Yeah, because I mean, I think that's, I guess we're, I'm not as sophisticated in this as Councilmember Garamella, but just like in terms of the machine learning, you know, like, I, you know, would like, would, would the, the shuttle or the service know, like if they pick you up, like, you know, if that, you know, like will send you a follow-up message, you know, through your, to your phone saying, you know, did you have a good experience? And then they know that that person is more frequent. So it's kind of like proactively helping the system, you know, kind of know where people are going to go get picked up, right? I don't know if those are the kinds of things, maybe that's diving into the weeds. But in terms of the algorithm and their product, maybe that's the kind of what he's referring to, so.
Sure, I, I, and correct me if I'm misinterpreting your question. But we do, as long as you continue to have the app open through your trip, you will get a request for feedback at the end of every trip.
Okay.
So that is something that is, is provided. I can tell you based on experience that if you close the app, you're not, you know, it's only in the app. So you're not going to get an email, but you, we do have the opportunity to get feedback from folks in that way.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is great. I mean, just diving into some of those issues, I think, you know, Shiloh Grove would be a good location. Another location on McCrimmon would be good. And then the final point, picking up to like looking at the pros and cons of, you know, going beyond Morrisville. We've had, and maybe we couldn't do this because of the Wake County rules, but because of all the reassignments, would the smart shuttle be able to be used? For example, if, you know, someone from Providence to Kids Creek, whose kid got reassigned, you know, they, they can't go to a park site anymore. Could, could that possibly be like, you know, a smart shuttle from like their bus stop to, you know, to the school? Because that could really help these parents out rather than having to deal with like transportation and busing.
Sure, yeah, so that's something I think in those FAQs from August, we kind of spoke to a little bit of the, the busing of students. And, and the, I suppose the concern with that is that we're taking that shuttle and sending it farther outside of our traditional service area. And that doesn't allow for folks to get picked up within the service area because it's then going outside of that. But I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
Councilmember Abadi, please.
I think the end of year two is a good time to make this a retreat topic and talk about what use cases are we looking to support with the shuttle? Because to me, people, I, I think it would be ideal if we could get everyone in Morrisville to work on, on a smart shuttle. You know, everyone to school, that would be great. But I think that, that's, that opening up a, a fixed route, to me, seems like a bigger undertaking than I think, than frankly, than I think we're ready for. And I think that a, a really good, solid compromise position is to tie in, tie in more of more nodes with existing nodes where people can take other buses. I mean, we used to do that in New York all the time. And, you know, hop off one bus, wait five minutes and along comes the bus that's going to take you to your stop. That's a good way, to me, that's a scalable way to, to increase the amount of people that'll be able to take advantage of the shuttle without necessarily creating a lot of infrastructure, a lot of, a lot of overhead that I just, that possibly we would have the numbers for. But like to me, to get one group of students to one school, it, it, to me, that's, that's a use case that makes very little sense, given where we are right now with this, with this transit option. So, I mean, I'm definitely not saying that I don't think we should drive Providence Place kids to school. That's not my point. I'm saying that when we look at the, the use case, like a use case of getting senior citizens to the grocery store. So we have a node at the senior center and a node at the grocery store. You know, it's not time bound, it's not, you know, it's not, we don't need an overhaul of the, of the program. And, you know, like to get people to the airport, we could connect with a node that already has a bus going to the airport, like that kind of thing. I think that that is a way more scalable way to expand the service and, and to me, just makes a lot more sense. And it would be really good if our app could plug into a, if you could route all the way to your destination in the app. So like if, if I want to go to the Breckenridge stop and get to the Amtrak station, what's my entire route? Not where is the Morrisville Smart Shuttle going to take me and then drop me? What's my entire route there? What's my entire route from Breckenridge Clubhouse to the airport? I think that would be also a real value add to the service. And I do love, I got to tell you, this presentation, like I love a metrics-driven presentation. I, that is like my whole day all the time and I love it. I did want to go back to, there was a slide early on about how far people have to walk to the, to their stop. And I just had a question about how that, yeah, this is it, average walking distance. So is this calculated, is this calculated by some type of external methodology? Where like we, we geolocate the person when they request the service and then map the route to their stop, whether they request directions or not? Is this only for, is this only calculated on people that request directions to their stop? Or I would think that would be a much smaller pool of, of people? Because once you know where your stop is, then you know. So can you explain to me the, the methodology of calculating that metric, please?
Sure, absolutely. So, and it's a, it's not indicative of every single request and I'll explain why. So there is a, a lock shed from each node that was developed when the service was developed. VIA has a lot of information on sidewalks and travel lanes and things like that. So that walk shed is basically saying, these are the sidewalks that are safe enough for you to walk. We don't want to direct folks to walk down the side of a road without sidewalks. And so if you, you have a couple of options, this is where the, the data gets a little fishy is that you can either say, I want to go from the library to Park West Village, or you can say, I'm in Town Hall and I need to get to Park West Village. And if you're in that walk shed, it'll give you walking directions to your closest node. So that's where that data is coming from. It's coming from, assuming folks are, it's from data of folks that are in the walk shed that are not requesting from a specific location, but rather are requesting from where they're at right now. Kind of getting to your point of giving folks directions to their final destination. And I just want to clarify your question, your point is that you're, you like to see if, you know, if you need to get downtown Raleigh, it tells you where your transfer is and how your transfer gets to Raleigh? Is that kind of what you're saying?
I'm saying I would love to see that and I think that would be a huge value add.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Naturally not directing you to do that, but I'm just saying, you know, let's put, I think that'd be a huge value add. And I do think that this is a very viable retreat topic. Because the, the future of the service, you know, I, I think that we should be really intentional about the future of the service and what we intend the service to be and also what we don't intend the service to be.
Sure.
So Caleb, this has been a fabulous presentation, a fabulous discussion. I'm not going to repeat a lot of stuff that's already been said. But to your slide about recommendations, yes, continue evaluating the program. It's a four-year plan. We're two years in, I'm going to say the same thing I said a year ago. That first year, we were still coming out of COVID, so I'm not sure how, how good that data is. Now we have a good, another solid year of data. I'd like to see year three and year four. So yeah, keep, keep up the good work and evaluating future nodes, adding amenities to the nodes that might help ridership. So I appreciate all that. I do think we should understand the pros and cons of going with the Wake, Wake County Transit Plan. I, I'm fearful that if we are not a part of that decision-making, we won't have as many nodes as we have today. And we certainly probably, probably, I shouldn't say certainly, probably won't be able to pick the nodes we want. But that's all the kind of information that would be really helpful moving forward. And I know you've already got that all on your radar. The only, the only question, and it's not really a question, the slide you had where you, you compared us to, and I realize we're kind of unique in the, the situation, but where you compare us to our other peer programs. The Wake Forest service I know has been in existence for a while. So those numbers really are, I'm kind of surprised. And then the Wake, or the Apex Route, I'm not sure how long that's been in service. But is there anything? This really surprised me that our ridership is so much higher than these other two programs that are already fixed routes. So is there any assumptions? Because I can, I can do a lot of assuming based on this one chart. But is there anything that you pulled out of that or anything you can share based on this chart?
That's a great question. So I would say you are correct, the Wake Forest Reverse Loop has been in service for a couple of years. They're actually doing a study to look at microtransit, just given the fact that their, their service isn't, you know, their ridership numbers. Apex Route One, I think they started in Q2 of FY23, so they're within their first year. So we, we should expect their numbers to increase, given that they're a fixed route. But to me, this speaks to, in terms of the smart shuttle in our service, this speaks to demand. This speaks to the fact that our folks, our residents want to rent a transit.
Okay.
That's what that says to me.
And, and also, these other two communities are at least double in population, if not more, to the town of Morrisville population. So that's why this chart really kind of jumped out at me that we're doing so well compared to such larger communities. But, okay, and that's all I have to share tonight, besides everything else you've heard here. So thank you very much.
Okay, so that was it from questions. What else do you need from us?
I guess we're, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're looking for just, are you guys generally okay with this direction we're heading in?
Yeah, essentially you want to continue for at least another year analyzing and checking. It sounds like there's some interest in having this as a retreat topic.
Sure.
So that'll be decided as we get closer to retreat.
And is the council generally comfortable with the idea of staff exploring that funding for our planning study?
Looking for head nods, seeing head nods, yes.
Yes. Wonderful. In that case, I think we're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one question.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't see you.
So as part of what you're going to do in the next one to two years, will that include the possibility of adding another node or two?
So staff are always evaluating node locations, always really excited to get feedback from community members on node locations. I, I think our, our hope is to not put that away, right? We want to constantly be looking at opportunities. I think something that staff is always in consideration when nodes are being brought up is, does this, does this make, improve service? Or does this continue to maintain reliability of service? Or does it, does it degrade that reliability? So those are things that we're kind of constantly evaluating. What do we think this is going to do? But no, there's no, I don't think there's any interest in stopping the evaluation of new node locations.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, when you said evaluation, I heard evolving. This continues to evolve and transform into a better service as we go.
Correct.
So keep that up, doing great. Thank you very much, appreciate it. So we are scheduled for a break right now. So why don't we take 15 minutes and reconvene at 7:50 for the rest of the meeting? Town Clerk, ready to begin? Okay. Town Manager Zudma, ready? All good? Okay. So we're going to reconvene at this time. We are now at item 10, public address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received or recognize anyone signed up.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. There were no public comments received via email and no individuals signed up to give in-person public comment.
Okay, is there anyone here in the room who would like to address this body for up to three minutes on any subject of your choosing? If you want to just approach the microphone, let us name your, let us know your name and your residential address for the record and you'll have three minutes. And if there's anyone else who wants to speak, you can go up, line up behind him and go next. Sir?
Hi, my name is Chris Fairchild. I'm the Cub master at Morrisville's PAC 393. We're the, probably the oldest PAC in Morrisville, we're the Cub Scouts.
Is that mic on?
I wanted to thank the town for putting up with a little bit of extra noise and showing some of the youth how the process of governance works. And while I was also up here, I wanted to thank the town for the attention that the fire department and the police department have given, hosting us through the years and showing the scouts what it was like to work in those locations. I think I was supposed to say my address too, 113 Council Gap Court, but I live in a city across the road.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank, thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, was there, was there anyone else in the room who wanted to address this body for up to three minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number 11, public hearing. There is one public hearing item on this evening's agenda, approval of the transit-oriented development and zoning plan. Staff does not have any item updates to present tonight, but will provide information at the November 14th Town Council meeting. The public hearing remains open at this time. I'd like to recognize Chris Lawson, planner, to share with us anything he'd like to.
Good evening, Mayor. You stole the words right out of my mouth. Basically, the public hearing remains open, there's no updates from staff this evening, though I can answer any questions you might have had in the meantime. We hope to return on November 14th with a plan to, to study Church Street in a recap of where the town is in T O D planning and a brief timeline of the steps that led us here and the steps planned ahead. That's all I have for you this evening.
Wonderful. Any questions for staff? Okay, is there anyone signed up, Town Clerk, for this night's public hearing?
No, sir.
Anyone in the room who wants to speak on this subject? Okay, thank you very much, we'll see you November 14th. There is, item 12, action items. There is one action item on this evening's agenda, a resolution amending the appointed public body's administrative policy. Eric Smith, Town Clerk, will facilitate the item. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor Colley. I don't know if I'll be as fast as Chris, but I think we can get through this one. Okay, as you are aware, Town Council was previously briefed on this item at their October 10th meeting. The review went pretty well. There were three updates that Town Council requested to be made to the item. The first was the replacement of biennial with two-year work plan cycle. That was just a really simple administrative update that was made. The second update that was. The second update that was, update that was requested by council was an accommodation statement for individuals seeking assistance submitting their application. We updated that here. We just added a statement, "The Office of the Town Clerk will provide appropriate support and accommodations to applicants who require assistance with processing and submitting their applications." And we also added a small section regarding expiring terms, just providing guidelines on what to do if you have an expiring term. This section reads, "Current members must submit a new application for your appointment during the recruitment cycle immediately preceding the expiration of their term." It also states that "The Office of the Town Clerk will inform all members with the expiring terms of their status and need to reapply via email and telephone." And that is the entirety of the updates made to the item. And I'll open the floor for any question from council.
I just wanted to acknowledge all of the work that you did from the last meeting, and you've incorporated everything so beautifully. So, well done. Thank you so much.
Seeing no one else, I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-372-JAS0.
I can do that.
Ms. Mary Strug Johnson?
Okay, I would, yes, I would like to move, and then, then we'll go for. I would like to move that we approve Resolution 2023-372-0, Appointed Public Body's Administrative Policy.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. I think we'd all like to echo Councilmember Strug Johnson. There was a lot of work that went into this behind the scenes. So thank you very much for getting all that through the, through the hopper. Thank you, sir. Now we're at item 13, Future Meetings, Events, and Community Engagement Opportunities. Please join us for the 2023 Dewali Festival on Saturday, October 28th, from 5 until 8 p.m. at Cedar Fort District Park. The celebration includes hands-on activities, music, food, and fireworks this year. Learn more on the Town's event page. A week from tomorrow, on Wednesday, November 1st, at 8 a.m., please join us at Wake Tech Morrisville Campus for our annual State of Morrisville hosted by our Morrisville Chamber of Commerce. This event will provide updates on the latest developments in Morrisville, including the groundbreaking for the new downtown Morrisville. Please register at the Chamber's website. Later that day, join us here in Town Hall to celebrate our newest Town Manager, Brandon Zuduma, who will be celebrating here that evening. Our Autumn Green Day event will be on Saturday, November 4th, from 8 a.m. until noon at Church Street Park. Drive-through service will be available, and participants will be able to choose from several stations for recycling and safe disposal. No registration is necessary for this event. There will be medication take-back will be available, as well as drop-off collection for personal computers, servers, cellphones, flat-screen monitors, circuit boards, and medical equipment. You can safely dispose of batteries at this event. Be sure to get there early to take advantage of up to two bags or cartons of our free secure document shredding of your sensitive documents. Nonconfidential materials should go through the regular recycling, please. The Town's Public Works Department is hosting a Fill the Truck event as part of Green Day. Please bring non-perishable food items to donate to Goodwill Industries of Eastern North Carolina and help those most in need. Thanks in advance to the lead organizations for the event, which is the Public Works Department, the Sustainability Program, and the Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee. So Morrisville's Veterans Day Celebration will take place on Saturday, November 11th, at 9 a.m. at Indian Creek Trailhead, which is 101 Town Hall Drive. Congresswoman Deborah Ross will be the keynote speaker. Following the program, as was mentioned earlier, the Morrisville Veterans Memorial Foundation, Inc. will be hosting its annual 5K Walk to support the future construction of the Veterans Memorial located at the Starting Line. The 5K Walk will start at the Indian Creek Trailhead. It will progress all the way to Cedar Fort Community Center and then return to the Starting Line. All attendees will receive a T-shirt. Light refreshments will be provided after the walk, and registration starts at 8:30 a.m. The walk will start at 9. The Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food and goods from small and local businesses from 8 a.m. to noon every Saturday at the Healthy Food Hub, which happens to be right next to the Dragonfly Disc Golf Course. For a full listing of events, please see the Town Calendar at www.morrisvillnc.gov. While there, sign up for our Next Week in Morrisville email, which comes out every Friday, and also download Morrisville Central on your Android or iPhone to have all this at your fingertips. And now we're at item 14, which is Council Comments. And I happen to go first, so I'll just keep on talking. First, I want to thank the Board of HUMSUB and all the vendors, volunteers, and participants of the Dewali Festival held in Cary a couple of Saturdays ago. It was a wonderful event, which brings the region together for songs, performances, and community building. HUMSUB has been intentional about bringing Apex and Morrisville into being more integral to the festival, and I look forward to all of Wake County being part of it next year. Then this past Saturday, I saw so many happy and smiling faces at our own Morrisville Trick or Treat the Trail. Always one of my favorite community gatherings. A huge thank you to our staff for managing the event, the vendors and sponsors, including the Morrisville Community Fund, which was represented in part by Ann, Liz, and Donna, and all the families who made the entire event such a success. Last night, I was very impressed to see the progress being made for the development and expansion of the HSNC campus. It is bold and imaginative and will add yet another reason for people from all around to come and visit Morrisville. To all who celebrate, Happy Bathukama. May you and your family have good health and prosperity, and Happy Dushara and Happy Dashane. May this festive season bless you and your loved ones with love, joy, and protection against all evil. Next, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Vadi, followed by Councilmember Fender.
I also would like to thank the Church of NCT for the invitation to the Bathukama and Dushara Festival. I had such a good time. You know, I always feel so warmly welcomed at these events. And it's, you know, just another way to say, oh, I think if my state board was in Jersey, I never would have gone to Bathukama Festival. That would have been a terrible loss. I also attended the unveiling of the, of the concept design for the, for the new HSNC complex. And I would congratulate everyone in the HSNC that's going to be.
Okay. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rau, please.
I don't have any comments, Mayor.
Councilmember Rau, followed by Mayor Pretem Johnson, please.
Just a couple of comments. Ditto and everything that's been said. Just reminder, early voting will be at October 28th at Apex Community Center for the November elections. November 9th, Connected Community Conference for Smart Cities with the Raleigh Convictive Center from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. I wanted to thank Governor Cooper for touring Schneider Electric last week and seeing firsthand the market-leading innovation taking place with the robotics and industrial process automation, driving sustainability and at the same time creating many new jobs and a new economy. I want to reserve just my final comments to respond to a resident who reached out to me a few days ago. We have many people that are new to our community from other parts of the world, many from India, and they're not as familiar with what's going on in our political process. And so they were a little bit confused about why Congressman Nichol was being districted out of his seat. So I just wanted to take a minute to explain to the residents of our town real quickly, one minute of what's going on. In 2022, the North Carolina House approved new maps because of a court order. And they went back into session this year, and they redrew the maps. And Congressman Nichol, from the 14th, Congressman Jeff Jackson, and Congresswoman Kathy Manning were due out of their seats, and the seats were drawn like 15% Republican. The only reason why they drew the maps was so Democrats could not win their seat. And now they will pick up three seats in this legislature. The courts will not be able to do anything about it because the Supreme Court has approved the process, and the U.S. Supreme Court has basically said that states can control gerrymandering. Why am I bringing all this up? Well, first of all, I want to commend my colleagues in the council for doing something in 2017, which I think the legislature should be doing, which is an independent, nonpartisan map drawing process, where staff was involved in the process, the elected officials, some of them are up here, were not involved, and we drew maps that were fair and impartial based on data and demographics. And I just, I just wanted to throw that out there so people know that that's what's going on. Maps, there was no reason to change the maps. And what I'm saying isn't as a Republican or Democrat, and tonight I'm only speaking on behalf of myself, not anyone here on the council. But I believe that voters, politicians should not be picking who votes for them. The voters should be deciding who picks for them. And so we can do something about it by emailing your legislators about having a more independent, fair process, because the greatest litmus test is having an election. And all three of those Congress leaders won an election in competitive seats. So I just wanted to say that. Sorry I went over my time, but for those of you asking the question, that's why Congressman Nichol has lost his congressional seat. Thank you.
Mayor Pretem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So just to kind of clarify a little bit, the Morrisville Community Fund was at Trick or Treat the Trail this past weekend, and we had a fabulous time. But I also want to recognize that our, one of our board members, Pete Martin, was also there. So Pete and Ann and I serve on the Board of Directors for the Morrisville Community Fund, and we had a fantastic time. Gave out a lot of candy. I ate a lot of lollipops, too. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Strug Johnson, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing other than like, I think next time we meet after the elections, right?
Correct.
So just wanted to remind, early voting, is the Cary location also there from?
Yeah.
It opens the 28th this weekend.
It's November 4th, and then the polls are open from, on November 7th, from 7, 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. So the four locations in Morrisville, and it's Parkside, HSNC, Church of God.
Nope, it's not Church of God. It's the Chandelier Event Venue now.
Oh, and, and Morrisville Elementary.
Correct. And there's 0506 as well, which is small.
Oh, is it? Okay.
That's a great reminder. Councilmember Strug Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to maybe add the fact that if you haven't registered to vote, the only time you can register to vote is during the early voting, which is available this weekend. But if you did register already, you can vote on voting day, but you, either way that you vote, you will need to bring your ID. That is a new law, and typically it's a driver's license, but it can be a state ID, a school ID. There are just a lot of different options. And if you go to the website for the state board, they do explain what ID methods that you can provide in order to support the fact that you are indeed the one that is registered and intending on voting. So I think that is a different thing for this year. And we need everyone to vote because the local elections affect you every single day. So we want to make sure that we understand, you know, that we hear your voice, and we will continue to do the work of the people. So thank you so much, and on to our next item.
Yeah, what my colleague said. Thank you so much. Town Manager Zuduma, are there any comments or info from staff?
Just a quick clarification, Mayor, regarding the State of Morrisville. It does begin at 8, but there is a 7:30 to 8 o'clock reception with light breakfast and the opportunity to interact and mingle, if you would. So just wanted to put that out there for council, but also for the community, too.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Now we're, item 15, Work Session. We have one work session tonight, an Affordable Housing Plan Implementation, Down Payment Assistance, and Land Donation Discussion. Danielle Kittredge, Principal Planner, and Thomas Lloyd, Planner 2, will facilitate. And from here, or should we join us? Let's all head down to the table, please. And that's where we'll be spending the rest of the meeting, I believe. So no break. We're just moving to the table.
Yeah, no, you can take it. It's just, I don't know if you want to use that, or if you take the keyboard, you can just press it.
This?
This one makes it a little easier to just scroll through versus.
There we go, because I won't have to.
I don't care. I'll take that seat.
Okay. Ms. Kittredge, it's all yours.
All right, I think it's on now. All right, so today we'll be talking about Affordable Housing Plan Implementation. We are into the Phase 2 portion of it. And I do have Thomas Lloyd joining as well. He'll be going over the second portion of the work session agenda items. So. And just as a reminder, I put the timeline on here. It just sort of highlights a lot of the efforts that have been made to date and where we're going. The, we've had conversations in terms of, well, the plan was really started in 2019. We started working with HRNA in the, moving beyond that. And then we have Phase 1 work that started in winter of 2022 to 2023. And from that point on, we've been also, from the spring of 2023, working on the Phase 2. And in the Phase 2, we did take the incentive zoning policy to Planning and Zoning Board in June, and then we did have a work session with Town Council in July. And that work session focused on the Affordable Housing Regulatory Incentive Policy, which was ultimately approved by Town Council on August 22nd. And then we were talking about, we had presented a draft public employee down payment assistance program looking at land donation options for affordable home ownership and some action steps from a meeting with Wake County. So in this, for this work session, what we'll be focused on is looking at the Public Employee Down Payment Assistance Program, some additional information in talking with Wake County. There was interest in leveraging, is there a possibility to leverage town dollars with a program? And then the second item that Thomas will be handling is we are looking at land donation opportunities for affordable homeownership, focusing on three lots that were identified by Town Council for us to take a closer look at. And we'll present some different ideas for those, as well as getting your feedback on next steps to potentially move forward with. And then I did want to mention here as well, something to look forward to that we'll be bringing back at a future date. There's a lot of interest in data with, from Wake County regarding affordable housing. So I've outlined some of the items that we're anticipating, hopefully by early November, that we'll be able to bring back to you. So there's interest in understanding affordable housing deficit at a variety of different AMIs, as well as rental versus homeowners at those different levels. There's information on median length of time of home ownership, age of housing stock. There's interest in area median income specific to Morrisville. So we are looking at getting that, as well as information about evictions in Morrisville that'll help inform some of the maybe challenges that are happening here that we don't see day to day. And in terms of naturally occurring affordable housing, also known as NOAs, Wake County does have information on rentals, but there is not information that they track on owner-occupied units. So we're looking forward to bringing some data back, as well as Wake County is putting together some information on capital projects that they have worked on to provide some more details in terms of what have partnerships looked like that they've worked on and providing some insight, because there was interest from Town Council on, you know, can we partner more with Wake County on something? And I think these will help tell a little bit more of a story of things that they've worked on and informing that conversation. Oh, yes.
Can we, can we also add? One more point is, how many from the town are eligible? Like, you know, because it's a small universe of people, right? Or send a survey out. These are the criteria, like, just to see how many are. These are the criteria, like, just to see how many are interested. Eligible for this plan for down payment assistance.
Oh, down payment assistance? So I think in terms of what the town was focusing on with, if there is a pilot that's done, it would be town employees, and possibly Wake County Public School employees, and Wake Tech employees.
Yeah, no, I, I, that universe we know. And that, within Morrisville, what is the universe of people?
But I think, I saw the idea, is these people are, they cannot live in Morrisville now, because they can't afford it.
Or, or even that, like, in the town, like, at least, let's start with the town data. We have that HR, like, we know everything. How many are eligible out of 200 people today?
We can take a look at that in terms of if there's interest, and we're moving forward, and looking at that as a, a number of, you know, what is that eligibility, just at the potential town level with an AMI that is set?
The reason I'm bringing it up is, suppose, say, 20% of, say, 220, how many employees we have? 225. So select 50 people, right? And most of them, I know, will be from the Fire Department, or the Police, or, or the Public Works. Those are the three departments, or aquatic. So is there an interest of them? Because if you ask Fire and Police, they always like to stay in their faraway, because they need more land, and rightfully, whatever they want. So how much are we looking at out of 50? Like, 15 interested? You know, five interested? So I just want to get a feel of it.
And I will say, we did, you know, to inform, you know, the potential down payment assistance program, we did do a survey with town employees and targeted schools, with Wake County Public Schools, to understand sort of their, their household incomes, different needs and interests, and of course, there are people who are interested in the program, and then there's people that, you know, they're happy living in a different location, based on needs and, needs and interest. And we can look into options, and I think it would be more the numbers, numbers-based in terms of looking at, it might be too soon to actually want to ask individuals. You know, that may qualify for that program, but I think part of a pilot, as well as, if it's open to a certain number, a certain group of people, does that group continue to expand over time? Because I've heard interest for seniors and veterans, and the pilot program is to see, you know, I think there will be some interest, but there may be interest in expanding over time as well, too, if that's a place that Town Council chooses to invest in.
Yeah, can we get a, a report of that XO? Or whatever.
And I think, you know, what, yeah, one of the challenges, too, and in thinking about some of the numbers as well, I mean, you can understand what, you know, individual salaries are, but in terms of household income, that is something we don't know from people, and it's going to be the household income that's going to be the driving factor.
Yeah, that, with the salaries, we won't get it. A spouse is working, okay.
Yeah, so that might be a little more challenging. All right. So this is jumping into the down, Public Employee Down Payment Assistance Program. And for this, just as a recap, Town Council was interested in finding a way to try to leverage town dollars. So we did have more conversations with Wake County, and there are a few key items on this slide in terms of what we learned in those conversations. I think the main thing that's important here is Wake County can't reserve funds for a specific municipality. So their programs are open to everyone. Individuals would have the option to apply both for the Wake County program, as well as apply for a Morrisville program. That would off, you know, that would be an opportunity to offset the cost of the Morrisville program, and that they could be layered together. The funding that Wake County has allocated in their, what they call the Wake County Affordable Home Ownership Program, has already been fully allocated in FY '23. So it was something that had a lot of interest to it, and Wake County is looking at being able to fund their program in higher amounts in the future, so that funds are available throughout the year. But knowing, you know, at least in this particular year, that funds are already expended for this fiscal year, if there is layering with the Morrisville program and Wake County program, there needs to be thought about timing and making sure that applicants are able to apply for both, and secure both potential funding sources.
Do we know, can we get data? Did anyone in Morrisville apply and receive any of those funds?
I can ask about that, if that is information that they are able to provide to us.
Because I do appreciate, at one of our earlier sessions, staff has indicated that they're being more proactive about letting everyone know that these programs exist. So it'd be nice to know if Morrisville residents are already using those.
Are, are, like, like, as Donna is talking about, anyone in Wake County who has taken assistance and living in Morrisville as part of it? Right?
So if you're in.
The other programs, you mean?
No, for the Wake County one. This is a Wake County one.
Yeah. I think it's, yeah, sounding like the same thing. So if anyone has, in this particular cycle, I can also see if, if this data is something they're available to provide to us, and maybe even the previous year, if that's also available.
Thank you.
And so I didn't, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, so we have not reached out to Wake County Public Schools specifically on that. I think part of it was the, part of the conversation, too, is figuring out if we're going to do the program, but I can certainly make note of that and take a, a closer look at it. But it would be, trying to think, in terms of, they'd be applying to our program, and so if there is any obligation on their side to do anything in particular, or, you know, how we're, we're tracking different things. So I guess I also want to make sure of the particular challenge that it might create. Okay. Yeah, and it may be, and if there is an interest in, in moving forward of the program, that it's just open to all Wake County Public Schools, and as an option, too, and that normally people want to live near a school, so if someone located on the other side of Wake County, they may not want to live in Morrisville as well.
Piggybacking on what Ann is talking about, suppose, we as, we are doing this only for Morris, right? And suppose Wake County school teachers also have similar program, and also Wake County as a whole has their program. And how will you distinguish which is a better program from end-user point of view? You know, is it to take ours or theirs? You know, or, or can we collaborate? Because if Wake County Public Schools, there's only so much that they give, and we add it with ours. So those combinations or permutations, is it something we have ever looked into?
Yeah, and just looking at the possible opportunity to layer a Morrisville program, say, with the Wake County program, one of the things we might want to look at is, is using the same service provider, same service provider that administers the program, that can help navigate some of the differences in the applications. But also, there's going to be a variety of information that's going to be required to be submitted. And in terms of the goal of a down payment assistance program, is that it's helping fill a gap. So if a ma, if you have a certain max, you don't automatically get that amount, and then have extra cash at the end of the day. It's, you're filling that specific need. So we'll also be looking at whoever's evaluating the applications that come in, identifying, you know, if they do have additional funding sources. What is, based on this particular household's income, maybe it's a little bit higher, I mean, still within the threshold, or this one's a little lower. So there will be an evaluation process with all of that as well.
No, I, I get that. What I was trying to go, like, another example is Medicaid, Medicare, right? If a person doesn't have, like, on SSI or something, they are eligible for Medicaid, and then the Medicaid pays the premium to Medicare. So in that scenario, like, if the person is available in Wake County, like, school system, and there is certain set which is coming from there, you know, what is that we can add on top of it to extend it to more people, so that they are getting there from the primary base? And if we can add, so it is only stretches more, that's, that's the whole thought process.
Yeah, I think it would be encouraging people to apply for, if there are multiple programs that don't conflict, to apply to those multiple programs, and making sure that we are understanding if there's additional funding sources coming in. I don't know if that's still getting to your question or not, but I'm, like, trying to layer it on top, and so it will be a little tricky when you are starting to, to layer different things of, have you applied? When do you know about this money? And then what is the gap that Morrisville may be covering? All right, any more questions? So I did want to briefly go over as well to the, the Wake County Affordable Home Ownership Program, just so that there is some understanding about what their program is and how it's currently operating. So they do provide up to $50,000 for qualified home buyers. There's a 0% interest rate, and then every five years, the loan is forgiven by 25%. So at 20 years, the loan is completely forgiven. That's also kind of a, a big distinction, too, to kind of what we were talking about for the Morrisville program, and that it would be repayable, and potentially have a very small interest rate on it, in order to help the program be sort of sustainable over, over time. So I did want to point that out. That's how their program is structured. It also is looking at households that have 80% or below AMI, and looking at individuals purchasing their first home. I will caveat this as well, they do follow, I think with the state and the NC Finance Agency, first-time home buyer can also mean someone who has not owned a home within three years. So it does open up that category as well. And then households in Morrisville would be eligible for the program. Wake County program is administered through DH, DHIC, and currently, they don't have any set date for the program to end. So every year, they're intending to allocate funding for the program, and it is available on a first-come, first-served basis. So that is one of the things that, you know, in, in a layering, there could be at any point in the future, it's decided that they want to transition to a different program, or not do it anymore, or funding could be increased a lot more, decreased, but it is funded annually.
January 1st?
Know the date of that?
It's based on fiscal year, so I do believe it.
July 1st? Okay, so we have some time to help our residents get, be part of that next time, and we have some runway now.
So how many of the $50,000 did they give out? How many home buyers did they qualify each year?
So I'd have to look at, I had the amount earlier, of how much they funded it at, to see how many people they actually served, because whether or not everyone qualified for the full $50,000, or had like $40,000, based on their income, with that. But I can certainly ask to see how many households they were able to serve with this program this fiscal year.
And how long has Wake County had this program in place?
I'm going to say it's only been a couple years. I believe it's relatively new, in terms of, two, two, maybe three-year timeframe. But don't quote me on that.
Isn't tended that of this program, that being the entire down payment? So in other words, is it like if a couple has saved up $20,000, does that make them ineligible for the program? Does it have to be, does this $50,000 have to represent the entirety of the down payment?
I think they could probably, and I'd have to check in terms of, you know, how they actually figure out what part of that, part of that $50,000 you would qualify for. I don't know that it's, you know, you have 20, maybe you're putting up to that 20% down, and if you're buying a certain amount of house, that, you know, you would need that, that $50,000, to making sure that it is actually going towards a down payment for a house, and it's also going to be based off of where you fall on that, that AMI.
So I have a follow-up question. I'm trying to remember, when you presented, and the consultant presented those slides previously, there was a calculation in there that said how much we should be giving the qualified home buyer to, for them to be, like, given what their income is, and given what the cost of houses in Morrisville. And I thought that number was about $100,000.
It was $100,000.
Okay. So the $50,000 would not be enough?
Yeah, so the, in, probably in Morrisville, if they're buying the average house at 80% AMI, the gap is going to be a little bit larger, so that $50,000 will be helpful, but maybe layering with a Morrisville program would also be helpful to them. And I did want to put into perspective, I did recently read as well, at the City of Durham, or City and County of Durham, their program offers $80,000 to individuals, and the AMI is slightly lower in Durham. So they recognize that there is, there is a pretty decent gap.
Yeah. My question is around this AMI. I don't know why I got hung up on that, but giving you an example, a person in Garner wants to, is eligible for their 80% AMI, wants to buy a house here, because could be an employee staying there. Which AMI is taken into consideration? The Garner one, or the Morrisville one? Because the Morrisville one is higher?
So it's, it's based off of, it's determined based off of the county. So the number is determined based off of looking at everyone that is in the county, and it's something that's determined by HUD. And so AMI has, there's, everyone has the different boundaries. This one follows Wake County. So it is same for anywhere you live in the county, the AMI is the same.
Then that confuses me more, because the reason we are doing Morrisville is because of the higher bracket of the housing cost, right? So are you saying, like, if you're using the Conti numbers, then a lot of things, a lot of people will be eligible?
Yeah, and I think that what we're kind of looking at as well, so, you know, you have your 80% AMI, which is going to be around $80,000 for the county, in terms of looking at just the county overall. I think you can stretch your dollars further in, in different areas, and we recognize in Morrisville, the housing prices are a bit more, and so that's why you might see, maybe when Wake County first evaluated their program, they're looking at the county and thinking $50,000 is covering some of that gap. But then we start looking at Morrisville, and that average median house in Morrisville is a little bit more, and so that's why we're looking more at $100,000 is that need. So the dollars don't, don't go as far.
So, so this is exactly what I was looking at, right? If, if, if a Wake County, they're eligible for this $50,000, and they want to come to Morrisville to buy a house, or whatever it is, then we can stretch our dollars by giving them $50,000 on top of what they are giving already from Wake County. And in that way, we don't have to give $100,000. Because honestly, if I were into this category, why would I come to Morrisville? I would go somewhere else where, you know, my payments are lower, and I'm getting better buck for the money.
And you may see people that potentially take advantage of the program up to $50,000, but where their dollars can be stretched may not be in Morrisville without additional assistance, too. So I think that'll kind of be an interesting question, if they are allowed to provide us where people are buying houses through this program.
Yeah.
All right, any questions on that? So this is my last slide, and it is asking for some direction based on this information and what we learned. The first option is to direct staff to go back and modify and take a look at the down payment assistance program, to allow for the leveraging of Wake County funds, in terms of having someone layer the programs together, and being able to facilitate that, as well as maybe how we review the applications, and allowing the town's contribution to be a little bit lower to serve more people. The second option is to advance Public Employee Down Payment Assistance Program, as we previously discussed, without necessarily taking into those considerations of the layering, and letting people sort of do that on their. layering and letting people sort of do that on their own, perhaps. And then the, the third option is to direct staff not to move forward with any Public Employee Down Payment Assistance Program. And I will say, just on the right-hand side, the next steps for options one and two in here is that if we are looking at either of those, we would come back for an additional conversation on what the program framework looks like, but there's also the larger discussion around funding and understanding too, you know, how many people you are interested in, so those become part of the, the budget and funding discussions that go along with that. And then there are several additional steps that would have to happen after that in terms of adoption of the policy, dedication of the funds, interviewing potential program administrators, the forms and publicizing, and everything that kind of goes along with standing up a program. So making sure, making aware that there are a variety of steps that would still need to happen with that. So I know we've got a couple of questions here.
Apologize, my first question is, can either option one or option two allow us to have something in place for July 1st, so that residents who wish to would be able to layer it on their own or with our assistance with next year's fiscal year funds?
It is a potential with, but you would have, it would have to be part of the budget allocations in terms of deciding how the town would want to fund the program, or how the town would be able to fund the program with that. So I think, and you may have some additional sort of just mechanisms of how, how kind of the budget all works, but we may have some slight challenges in terms of then also just being able to get all of the forms and everything put together, and a program administrator, administrator selected to have it specifically up and running on July 1st if program funds are available. So there may be some administrative things that need to be done to make that happen. You may need a microphone. Microphone.
My apologies. Michelle Stiegel, Planning Director again. If I could just expand on that a little bit, part of the challenge is that until you have the funding in place, you don't have a contractor to help you stand up the program, and so that is a challenge. You would need to make some funding decisions so that we could go out, find someone to contract with to administer the program, to prepare those forms, stand everything up, and start publicizing. So that funding piece and one that comes into play would be critical to when we could stand up a program, and you're still looking at months after that funding is available to be able to do that.
So then I would ask, I guess Town Manager, when would be an opportunity to address the funding question? If that was the desire of the council?
So?
To have this in place by July 1st, for example.
So you would have to consider doing something mid-year, so keep in mind, November 14th, we'll be back, and you will get your financial reports, you'll get your fund balance, so you could have that discussion then. I assume there will be discussion about other perhaps opportunities that, that council may discuss, but I think getting that information November 14th is, is critical before any sort of follow-up could be had.
Okay.
And this is one of those programs too, where, you know, it's a substantial amount of money that would need to be, have a sustainable source of funding over many years of it as well. So that's part of the discussion too.
Thank you very much, that's helpful to help us determine whether we want option one, two, or three.
Oh, yes, oh yeah, you could, I think you're used to doing that, so. Oh, is it? I think, I think Councilmember Ralph, Ralph, yeah.
Well, she can go first, she's before me.
Councilmember Rabody.
I just wanted to say that I think option one is the better plan, because I think that if we can, I, well, okay, so just take a step back, how much more work is option one than option two? So to figure out the timing, we'd be talking about the timing basically, right? And-
Some of the timing, and then I think some of the framework and how, how we want the program to operate, and this is where we would bring HRNA back in as well to continue having those discussions on that framework and making sure that we are approaching it the right way, as well too, to make, to make a lot of that all work.
But we would have to bring HRNA back anyway, right? I mean, there, so, okay. So then I think option one, because I do think that if we want the program to be, to provide meaningful down payment and help people actually buy a house in Morrisville, I do think that it's just advantageous of us to work as closely as possible with Wake County.
Yeah, I think option one is a good, excuse me, is a good option. My question is, well, I mean, one thing that, when, you know, when it comes to funding, when we had the joint meeting with Apex, you know, some of the council members had said that, that in Apex, even though it's, it's a different local government, that when they funded it, that's when their affordable housing program started to do really well in terms of just, I guess, assuming getting the contractor on board, things like that. So I'd be curious as to, you know, you know, what that, what that funding would be, when it would be, and then, you know, what, what problem we're all as a council trying to solve. Because my goal for affordable housing is to enable our town to have more affordable housing opportunities, not only for the people that live here, but the people that are coming in, so we can increase homeownership. So, you know, I know there's no cookie cutter approach, but obviously what Apex has been doing, it's worked well, I reviewed their program where they funded it, then they did a tax scent allocation, but that funding went into hire a program manager, to have a program, to have staff support, but then there was like different layers to say like, in the first five years, this is how many units. So that's what, I, I just want to make sure that I'm, I mean, you know, that's the goal, right? At the end of the day, is to get a program in place so that developers would see an opportunity and come forward and say, look, we can do an affordable housing project, right?
Yeah, and I, I do think a little bit too, we are kind of approach things a little bit piecemeal with different things, and that is an option to whether or not you all decide you want to stand up a, a full affordable housing program. I know Apex, you know, has a whole, whole program in which they continue to work on, on different aspects of affordable housing, so I think that's, you know, could be a piece of the conversation as well. And we are approaching it from, you know, the down payment assistance, looking at some individual town-owned lots, but if there are projects that you are interested in doing more of the capital, capital projects, and partnering on those types of things, understanding some of the staff capacity that might be needed, whether there's additional resources that are needed, to have those continual conversations, and to be able to do those types of projects as well. So that might be considered part of the, more of the larger package of affordable housing and direction as well.
If I could, Mayor, so I think as you consider this as an option, want to just remind you also, don't, don't get too far into doing this in, in isolation. And so some of this, this might be a good conversation to have at the retreat as we discuss other budget items. I realize that's, that takes a little time, but want to be careful that you have a number of other significant programs and opportunities and needs that you're going to be addressing or talking about. I don't want you to get caught up in this being first, and this discussed in a vacuum without consideration of all the other things that, that could merit funding, whether it's mid-year, after the retreat, or in FY '25.
Yeah, so I agree with Ann and Steve that I prefer option one. I think that's a good way of helping the most people. And, you know, I am, my goal for affordable housing is increasing homeownership to help people have a sense of place, a sense of ownership, because I think that makes a real difference when you own a home versus you're renting. You just naturally take care of your home and, and invest in it and take, I don't know, I could go on and on about that. But then to build off of what Steve was saying, during that joint meeting we had with Apex, I actually wrote down the quote with the interim Town Manager said, because, I mean, he, I thought it was so important, and he was very emphatic about it. He said, "Getting the funding, that was the real trigger. The funding was the key." And so, you know, I don't know the details exactly or their timeline, but they started taxing to get the funding in place before they had fleshed out their entire affordable housing plan. But he said that was the key, was getting the funding in place.
All right, so, oh, go ahead, yes.
I think number one is the most sensible, because we've wanted to help more families and individuals, and we just can't do it on our own. It just, even though we have big hearts, we just, it's very expensive, and it's getting even worse, so if we could maximize the impact by coordinating or offering an opportunity to do a stacking with Wake County, I think that would be helpful. And, but it's not going to be easy, that's for sure, and I, I think it's going to be interesting how different groups will apply, you know, that might, or might not be eligible. We should also look at the eligibility, not everyone who applies gets the maximum amount, maybe there's other criteria that we would consider, because that would allow us then potentially to help additional people. So, thanks.
So I think in terms of, yeah, next steps, we'll be able to continue to work on, you know, refining this particular framework, and I think that'll help also with this feedback to inform your conversations too, when it does come more of the budget side of things, of understanding if you, you know, do want to fund the program, and how much it's funded, and who that might be able, number of people it might be able to serve. But we can certainly continue on with that framework so that things can be set up if any decisions are made to that side of it. So thank you for the feedback. Is there anyone else that had any more questions on this topic before we move on to the next one?
No, but the only, the only comment I really want to reiterate again is we are, this is important work. Homeownership is important, nobody's opposed to that, but we are not creating affordable housing units in the town of Morrisville. And that goes to your point, Steve, that we're just not doing that. This is not doing that. We're helping people own a home, which is great for those that can afford to own a home, because don't forget, owning a home is expensive, but we're missing out on helping those that don't want to own a home, and those that are going to not be able to afford to own a home. And we are not creating affordable housing units by doing this. And that is my concern that I've been trying to, to express every time we have this conversation again. So I'm clear, I'm not opposed to homeownership, that is critically important, but we are not adding affordable housing units.
Thank you for bringing it up, and that was kind of like the reason I, the driving point behind my question is, is this the first step of, you know, providing something that gets people started, but I still think that, is there something else that we can consider? I, I just like the mayor Portem said, I don't want to, like say we do this, and then we can't have what I think we need, which is more affordable housing units, more projects. How do we get to that point?
Yeah, and I think there's a variety of, you know, different things. We also have the incentive zoning policy that was recently adopted, so we've had a lot of people talk to us about that particular policy as they're looking at land or projects in Morrisville. So that is, I mean, that is one area in which, you know, we may see some, there may be options with this homeownership, whether it's down payment assistance, whether it's a project, there may be opportunities, and I'll see what types of information and feedback I get from Wake County on capital projects that they've worked on, and of course, a lot of those are, they're going to be, I mean, they're going to be in the multifamily and the rental side, because that is where they're able to make some of the most impact. And, but that then comes down to, you know, the funding question and different things to be able to do these types of projects, but I do think there's, of course, not, there's not one, one solution for everything. They are little projects from a variety of angles. So I think we are, you know, having slow, slow incremental projects on this, and coming at it from both maybe a rental side and homeownership side.
We already have those affordable apartments, and those, what we got, three apartments in the first year that have those.
But that's a handful.
Yeah, but yeah, that's a start, but we have those.
Well, that's thankfully to a majority on council that chose that option. The majority in this council did not, or not everyone on this council helped make those affordable housing units come here. So I, I'm just repeating that I think that's an important piece of this puzzle. I'm not opposed to what we're doing.
We forgot about it. You said we weren't adding, you know, affordable housing rentals, but you have, you have added them.
We're not doing it through this program. That is, that's the piece I keep bringing up, and I'll keep re-bringing it up, because I think that's important. We can move on. I just want to make my point and move on. We've all said option one, so we can move on.
I agree with you to that point. My question is, how do we get to the point where whatever we're funding is giving us the opportunity to create more units? And I was under the impression that Apex had a program, and whatever funding they did was actually investing in a program that said, this is the amount of units. That's exactly why I brought it up. I agree with you. I just think that we need to talk about that.
There's different aspects and different subprograms, so, Councilmember Caramilla.
So I feel we should have three buckets. One is, it's, it's not like it will happen overnight, but if we start reserving money for land acquisition, for, you know, have that for humanity, it's like, it, it can be like $200,000 or something, it just adds up. And then, and when you get an opportunity to buy land, go buy it, so, and then give it, because the land that we currently use, like we have selected, there are spots where I think it's not the best buck for the money too, that's my personal opinion on that. But the stream like we have will at least start funding, and then we have the money if opportunity comes, then you can go buy it. Number one. Number two is this homeownership. And, and number three, there has to be some for the people who cannot be eligible or are not interested, as, as simple as that. They are, they are like, they want to test it out, they are not sure if they want to live in Morrisville, but they want it to be affordable, as simple as that, you know, because many of the Gen Z's and the seniors, they don't want to buy a house and go through the whole thing, you know, because they're not sure what they want to do. So when you have all three options, then the option one anyway is, is floating, the option two is only helping us to fund the coffers whenever the opportunity comes, and option three is when these two don't want to go through any of these options, we have a third option. But that, I think that way it is equitable among all the three plans, that we are going throttle in all three areas, not just one area.
That all becomes a larger, larger budget.
I have a question, because you, you actually, I think, answered this for me. First time homeowners are folks, the definition is they haven't owned a home in the past three years. And what, tell me again, what, Danielle, what, is that an official, is that something we have to abide by, is?
So in terms of with the Wake County program, so they, they're, that program's target first time home buyers, but they also follow the definition, and I believe it's the, the North Carolina Finance Agency that does a lot of homeownership programs and different opportunities, because that's another place where people can get certain types of financing through them as well. But their definition is, and I believe that's the agency that they're referencing, you have to have not owned a home within the last three years to fall into the definition of a first time or new home buyer.
Okay.
And so we do not, I mean, we don't have to, if Morrisville does a program, we don't have to target first time home buyers, it could be anyone as well, so that is, you know, part of that conversation. But in terms of the Wake County funds, that's who they target.
Okay. No, I, I, I think we should target first time home buyers, but- No, I, I, I think we should target first time home buyers, but I was curious about that definition. Okay. Thank you.
All right. On to the next one. Um, I think we're probably way past time because we've got land, oh, we're good? Okay. So we've got land donation that Thomas is going to take from here in terms of the three properties that we were asked to look at.
All right. Thanks Danielle. And as Danielle said just then, I'm Thomas Lloyd. Uh, I haven't been near y'all in a while, so, uh, thank you for having me back. Uh, you know, don't, don't go too hard on me since this is my first work session. Um, but I have some handouts for you all. And if y'all just want to take them and then pass them down. Are you gonna, yeah. Okay. All right. So I'll start out just with a little bit of background on how we got to this point where we're at right now. And we were asked, uh, staff was asked to identify town owned property that is currently not developed and to then evaluate residential potential at a high level on these properties. And at the July 25th, uh, town council meeting, we were asked by you all to further evaluate three property locations for potential affordable housing projects. And those property locations are 201 Page Street and 101 through 105 Church Street. And we were asked on that to do single family detached and townhomes. And then at the lot across from the Historic Christian Church to do single family detached townhomes and multifamily. And, uh, the way we kind of came up with these, uh, with these conceptual drawings that we have were by using building footprints that Habitat for Humanity builds to illustrate what could be built on these sites. Uh, we thought that would make sense just because they're a, you know, a proven, they have a proven track record of affordable housing projects. So that would be a good kind of baseline to use when trying to figure out what we could do on these sites. Uh, we did take these to the Towns Development Review Committee, uh, on October 5th, and we incorporated some revisions based on their comments. And we also received just some preliminary comments from Habitat for Humanity, uh, just to get some feedback with somebody that, that has a proven track record. And before we get into the actual concepts, uh, just wanted to kind of frame what we need from you all tonight. Um, we're looking for direction on which town owned properties council would like staff to move forward with on affordable housing. Uh, we're also looking for direction on which conceptual types town council prefers to move forward with. And then lastly, we're looking for direction on how a town council would like staff to move forward with finding an affordable housing partner. So the first one is 201 Page Street. And, uh, this is, uh, what we're looking at here is if this property were rezoned to high density residential, um, it's currently historic crossroads. Uh, we think there could potentially be two units, uh, available on site. And these units are habitats, just their general, uh, single family detached homes. Uh, they're one story and they're three beds and two baths. Uh, there are some challenges for this site. Uh, there could be additional right of way dedication needs. Uh, this is a pretty busy intersection there at Morrisville Carpenter and Church. Um, there also could be some potential future transportation impacts if there's widening and stuff like that. Um, and that could potentially reduce the developable area. And what I'll do here is I'll go through each property and each concept and kind of say, uh, pros and cons. And then at the end, we have an opportunity for you all to have questions. And, uh, just, and as I said earlier, these plans are completely conceptual. Um, you know, if this project does proceed, we, we anticipate that additional adjustments would be necessary. So we'll go to the next one. This property is at the corner of, uh, of Church Street and Morrisville Carpenter Road. So what we're showing here are eight single family dwelling lots if it were rezoned to high density residential. Uh, this, this concept is based on the same footprint that we showed earlier. Uh, it's just their standard footprint. There are some challenges with this site as well. Uh, there would need to be a reduction in some of our dimensional standards such as buffers and minimum lot sizes. Uh, and there is some room to do that with the affordable housing incentive, uh, zoning incentive policy that, that you all just passed. Uh, the public street on the property that would have to provide access to the units would have to be 50 feet wide, um, which is definitely doable, but it kind of makes it harder to get more lots than that. Uh, once again, this is a busy intersection, so that's something, you know, to be, to keep in mind as this goes through the process, as well as just potential future transportation impacts if there's ever widening or anything like that. So this is the townhome concept for the same property. Staff thinks we could get 10 to 14 units if rezoned to HDR. Uh, really, a lot of these challenges are the same challenges that we've seen in the single family version of this. And just to be clear, these attached townhomes are two stories. Uh, so it's a little bit of a different product than what you would see with a single family detached. Um, one of the biggest issues we see with this concept is just a lack of usable space and buffers. Uh, if you see how they're kind of packed in there, there's not really a whole lot of open space or, or anything like that. Um, staff has already kind of had some internal discussions just thinking if, if town council decides to proceed with this concept, uh, it may be better to remove the four units there that are fronting on Morrisville Carpenter, uh, just to give a little bit more open space as well as usable area. And in the, in the event that, you know, if there's ever a transportation impact, uh, you know, it would be better able to, to take that if that were to happen in the future. Our other concern with these four units near Morrisville Carpenter is just the alley that would be loading them. If you see there, it's alley loaded. Uh, there's not a whole lot of separation between the 50 foot right of way north of that and that alley. So that's also a concern and a, just another reason to, you know, potentially take those four units out. Uh, like the single family, there would need to be considerations for reductions in buffers and dimensional standards. We, yeah, you want me to grab? Yeah, it's a lot smaller when you're looking at it up there.
I'm going to say, I understand, but like I, when you say the four to four, I'm trying to keep.
Yeah, the four units that we're talking about are these right here. You got Morrisville Carpenter here and then Church Street right here. So if you see this alley, there's not a whole lot of driveway separation between this road and where this intersection is. Um, so that could, you know, everybody knows how busy Church Street is, so that's definitely something to be thinking about. Um, and then the last challenge is just that the townhomes would not be fronting on Church Street if we're maximizing the amount of units there.
Why is that a challenge? To me, I think that would be good.
Yeah, it would just be that it's not, that it's kind of its own internal townhome development, not, you know, a traditional town center type development where it would be fronting on Church Street or on Morrisville Carpenter, where it's, you know, brought up to the road and stuff like that.
I'm not that sure. The goal should be to maximize the number of units that we can pack onto the property. But to me, if we create, if we create a lot on this, on this lot, then, yeah, I think that's better than packing 14 townhomes. That was never in my picture.
Sure. And it, not only would it be better, but it'd be a more quality of a development as well. Sure.
Could you say again, when you were saying you'd rather do the, 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 the attached townhomes?
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm saying I'd rather do single family detached anywhere, but I'm saying that I don't think the goal should necessarily be to pack as many units as we can onto, but I think this, I think 14 is way too many. I did like what you said about taking out the front four, you know, giving like a little breathing in to the space, but I'm not, you know, I'm not sure townhomes are necessarily really that.
I, I think it is okay because A, it's, it's, they need housing. We are not telling them what kind of housing, you know? Um, so it, it will be cheaper than a single family and they're able to get more and land is a premium. So I see nothing wrong in townhomes.
No, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with townhomes, but I find that eight, I guess is, like, like.
No, when, when you can fill it, the whole idea of affordable housing is to pack through our U D O, give their opportunity so that they can maximize the land. If you're trying to make a park and this one, there are other options. They can, you know, it doesn't necessarily, that's where we have the U D O to play, to, you know, give them more leniency to have more locks. That's the whole idea. So it's a discussion with different values. Yeah, yeah, but, but it's affordable housing.
And I was just going to say, just generally speaking, I mean, with townhomes and with affordable housing projects, and, and I'm no expert, but from what we've heard and talking with Habitat and other folks, you know, the more units you can get on there, the easier it is for them to make it work in their, you know, pro forma and what they're trying to do. Um, because they are, you know, they are a developer just like anybody else. So they're having to put this infrastructure in, they're having to, you know, make it work for them. Um, but I, I think you're very correct that, you know, it's also about quality. It's not just about getting as many units on there.
Now, I wanted to add that, um, Habitat is building and has built the townhome concept in Raleigh off of Old Pole Road. And they've done a number of those there and they don't have any front yard or backyard for those, uh, units. I'd also add to the location of this, they're going to be super close to the Indian Creek Trailhead as well as close to the town center. So I don't think that it should be a concern about lack of green space in this case.
So can I, can, just so we're kind of level set here, this is not what we're envisioning, but this is just to give us some concept, thank you, and, and how potentially you could maximize units. Whoever the, the nonprofit or the, the affordable housing developer that we finally work with, they'll determine what this should all look like. And obviously we'll do it together, but, um, so you could have townhomes fronted on church and kind of tucked in the back too, potentially. It doesn't have to look like this, right?
No, this is just a high level conceptual sketch, just to kind of get the conversation rolling.
Okay. And I appreciate the, the, um, the conversation about Morrisville Carpenter because that gives me, even when we first looked at these, at this particular lot, you know, that it is homes backed up, whether they are single family or, um, townhomes backed up to a really busy road. I mean, it's something to think about. I'm not saying maybe we do it or don't do it or, um, but I think it is something worthy of discussion. And, and then the last thing I'm going to say is this is the area where, um, there was affordable and still is affordable housing in Morrisville. This is, this and one other location I can think of are where we have our naturally occurring affordable housing that is quickly disappearing. So, um, anyhow.
All right. So this is the lot across from the Historic Christian Church and, uh, the current zoning is T C R. And in town center residential, single family dwellings, townhomes and multifamily are all permitted. Um, we think for this property, for it to be best used or to match what it would eventually be would be the main street zoning district. So that's what we use whenever we kind of came up with these concepts and what it might look like if it were under that zoning district. Uh, just to kind of be very clear, some of the challenges, uh, this is part of a future phase of town center. So developing now could impact or limit future design options for town center. And I think all of you are aware that, you know, Skoggins Avenue will be going away and there will be, you know, some design work that'll have to be done to kind of figure out what the, uh, you know, streets in that second phase will look like. So that's something that's very important to be thinking about while we're talking about these. And also to be clear, you know, not developing this site now for affordable housing does not preclude future incorporation of affordable housing as part of the future design and planning efforts in phase two of town center. Um, so that could always be, you know, done in the future as we're going through that prop, process. And, uh, it's a very oddly shaped property, as you can see. Uh, I mean, I don't know if that's a trapezoid or a parallelogram or what it is, uh, but it, it definitely makes it hard to kind of make, uh, you know, make lots work as well as just access roads. Um, so we'll go to the next slide. So this is a single family concept. And once again, we're using a 50 foot right of way. Uh, it's the same footprints from the, the single family concepts on the other lots. So in terms of challenges, it's just potential impacts on the future town center and its layout. Uh, if you look at the right of way, it does not line up with the street or with the, um, not the street, but the, uh, the church, uh, old historic church parking lot. So there were some concerns about that in the Development Review Committee. Um, and there would also need to be consideration, just like on the others, for reductions in, uh, in buffers as well as, uh, dimensional standards. So just with the funky shape of this lot and the, the odd shapes that some of those lots are as well as just small sizes, uh, staff does not recommend proceeding with this concept just due to those, uh, town center impacts and, you know, the caveats I said before that. And we also did a townhome concept on this site and, uh, has some of the same challenges in terms of the town center impacts and the driveway not lining up with the Historic Christian Church. With this, one of the concerns at D R C was just the ability to provide adequate, adequate driveway separations between all of the, uh, all of the townhomes. Like that's pretty tight. Um, another concern is just like where, where does this, you know, street go to? And it's the same thing with the last, the last concept we showed. You know, what does this look like for future town center? Um, but we also do not recommend this site just for, for all of those reasons. And then we have a multifamily concept as well. And, uh, with this multifamily concept, it's two stories and 20 units, uh, and is kind of limited in how many units it can be just due to having the, uh, the, the parking there. And the challenges with multifamily on this site are just, uh, you know, the shape of the property. Um, it's kind of hard to get enough density to make it work here due to the parking requirements. And, uh, also just the, where the orientation of the surface parking is towards the street. Uh, as planners, you know, we, we typically like to see that surface parking in the rear of a property, uh, and not necessarily there in the, you know, the front yard area. Um, and especially in a place like this, you know, close to the town center, we'd rather see something more main street oriented, you know, with a park, with parking in the rear. Um, but once again, this is just a concept as, as we stated before, but, uh, we do not recommend proceeding with this, this concept either.
Does it, the town on the parcel right behind that parcel? So it would be possible to reshape, to not make that parcel a weird shape.
It would.
No. If you look at the map, it, it's, you'd make two rectangles. So to say that that shape is limiting what you can do there is really not a true statement because the land right behind it is a town of Marshall too. So in theory, you could, you could reshape.
We combined, yeah.
You could. Um, would, would not.
If you want to, I mean.
Correct.
If that was what you wanted.
That's, that's generally accurate. Again, the, the largest concern that I think our, our planning staff has, and I will 100% echo, is that this could really negatively impact the potential for phase two of town center. But, but you, you make a good, you make a good point.
Just, I'm curious, why do you care if it, if the access road lines up with the Historic Christian Church? And to me, it'd be better if it didn't, wouldn't it?
No.
Yeah, I'll just add too, and when the consultant was drawing up the plans as well, um, the, the offset of when you're trying to turn and if two cars are turning at the same time and who's going first sometimes can create those types of conflicts. Um, so either you So either you want it offset far enough, or they had offset it a little bit more to like, I think it was the one side than the other, just based on turning movements.
All right. So first, I'll just go and do the staff recommendation, and then we can hear all of your feedback on this. But our recommendation is to find a partner and move forward with one unit on this lot. And that we're recommending just one unit because of future uncertainty with right-of-way and transportation impacts.
So you mentioned transportation impacts a couple of times. I thought Morrisville Carpenter Road was in its final state after our recent thing, so please clarify.
And actually, I think it shows on this aerial, right next to this property is where you still have the one lane that comes with Morrisville Carpenter, and then right there at Church Street, you start to get that second lane in. And so the Aviation Parkway Widening Project would come down to where Church Street is to make sure you have those two through lanes that continue both north and south. So here, you would be looking at that additional lane because right adjacent to the property is just one lane, so you would have two.
Okay, so that plan is pretty baked. So given the fact that we're losing that much land, are you saying right now that only one will fit?
Mm-hmm, yes. Likely only one will fit. All we have is conceptual plans. They don't have engineering designs yet for Aviation Parkway. And so we are just going based on where the, where the right-of-way is, that there's one lane out there right now, and we're gonna need another one. So based on that, one lot would likely be, one property or house would probably be the best.
Okay, and this is the one-level, three beds, two baths?
That's correct.
Could we put a townhome on there that's higher? Townhome's not possible here? Duplex?
We could potentially. I don't, I'm not sure if townhome does duplexes.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges too, in the, in the conver, yeah, the conversation, you know, depending on who it's partnered with, Habitat has a variety, if, for example, you work with Habitat, they have a variety of set models already, so that does save on cost in terms of already having essentially approved designs. They do not have, they have townhomes, a townhome design and a multiple single-family, so no duplexes. However, that, you know, isn't out of the question to whether or not they could do it or someone else could design a product.
So I, I personally would support the staff recommendation of putting one unit of some type in there, because I wasn't aware that we're getting another lane there, which is actually good news.
So I do not think that we should just do Page Street if you're looking at one of three, because Page Street's only one unit or potentially one duplex or potentially a townhome that only has two units. If we're going to build affordable housing in an area that has naturally occurring affordable housing now, we need to have multiples. And I really like the Church Street property, 101 through 105, or I even really like Council Member Fender's suggestion of redrawing that parcel. People do it all the time when they acquire land so that it can offer a high-quality product and it can offer, you know, 10-plus units so that people can have access to the Town Center. It's walkable. They can have access to, you know, walking for food. We don't necess, we're getting in the mindset of, hey, we can fit this in on the edge, you know? That's really not what you want with affordable housing. You want to blend it into active part of the city, and I like the fact that it is in the Phase Two because it's going to really allow people to engage even more with the Town Center. So that's where I'm thinking is not necessarily investing in Page Street this time, but investing in multiples in either Choice Two or Choice Three.
So I'll go next. I like the, I don't like the 201 Page Street. That concerns me a lot. I don't think we get bang for our buck there, although, I don't know, maybe a partner would tell us otherwise. But I like the 101 through 105 Church Street, and I would, I would ask our affordable housing partner to, to bring us concepts that they, that they're used to and that could maximize to a degree the number of units that we would see on those, on those parcels. And I, I'm not, I'm not thrilled with the other parcel across from the Historic Christian Church. I think we, we're concerned now about parcels in the Town Center area getting developed without, ahead of what we're trying to do, so I don't want to be a part of that problem. But I do want to, and we've talked about this before, I do want to figure out a way to incorporate affordable housing units in future phases of the Town Center. So this might be a good potential in the future. So I would start, I would start here, at 101 and 105 through 105. Again, naturally occurring affordable housing area to begin with.
Yeah, I agree with what's been said. I think we should move forward with 101 and 105. And I know on a future side, you guys ask, do we want to go with Habitat or some other one? You know, I'm not, I've, well, I'm not familiar with any other nonprofit developers like Habitat. I would just go with them since they already have systems in place and they do this all the time. What else was I gonna, I was gonna say something else. I guess, you know, my concern about not developing that piece parcel across from Historic Church, I mean, I like the idea of Council Member Skoggins Johnson of developing that. And I wonder if it's possible to use that for affordable housing, but, you know, I know we have some sort of concept design for that area. Have it blend in with that concept design so that it fits. My concern about hoping that the developer will do that affordable housing is, well, that they won't. We already know that Seeing is building those townhomes, and they're not gonna offer any for sale. They want to have them all as rentals. So I guess my fear is that that would be the same everywhere. I mean, I guess we could stipulate that, you know, some section needs to be affordable housing. But I guess I would just like to challenge us, are we absolutely sure? That, I don't completely understand why we could not use that parcel across from Historic Church for like Habitat townhomes. So I guess, you know, what, what exactly would be preventing us from that?
So I think the primary prevention there is in regards to, it would then dictate what the future of Phase Two could look like approaching that. You know, keeping in mind, this feels like it's very far away from, you know, where we're building, for example, the green, but it's not. I mean, it's, there's not a ton of space there. And you are correct, we do have a concept plan, but that concept is, is aged. And you've also seen, we had a concept plan for Phase One. And you see what you're getting now that is very different from what the concept was, you know, in part because of Seeing's creativity. I do think once Phase One is operational, that is gonna give you a little bit more ability to influence Phase Two and what comes there. You know, we had to, I think we had a good negotiation with Seeing to get them to do this first phase, because this is not an easy thing to do, starting from the ground up and creating it. Whereas the Phase Two of that should get easier, should generate more interest, I think. Of course, you know, the proof's in the pudding, but I think that we would, we will have more ability to control that and to require some affordable housing should you choose to then. I would just be concerned that we would be dictating a portion of what the property looks like that would potentially impact who might want to develop the rest of it with us. Worst-case scenario, but...
Okay, I'll just finish off with this. I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's enough to start with this one parcel and get those 10 units, you know, out there. I think we, I'd like to see more, but having 10 out there is better than none.
Yeah.
I have a different opinion on this. How many acres is this one? Point eight nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Is this the best use for that location? I'll start with that. The reason I say that is, Brandon, you have been negotiating all the costs and everything for downtown. And would it be more logical if we sell this, recoup the money, and buy somewhere in the town and have more units out of it? So it's just like location change, but still continue with your plan because it can, it can certainly give you a best value for money. And also, that particular area is highly commercial, it's on the street, and it will go in a heartbeat anytime because it's under like, what is that? Downtown residential.
Historic crossroads.
Yeah, so a lot of things. So, so I'm not deviating from the program of what you guys want to do. Like, I've been hearing you want more units, and...
So Frank and I have talked a little bit about the resale of this property based on us, you know, having recently purchased it. Can you speak to that a little bit for us, Frank, in terms of, you know, selling it off? And if it's different, if we sell it, just to sell it versus sell it to purchase other property to try to turn it into affordable housing?
Which is, which is the one?
To resell it, plow the proceeds back into another affordable housing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, so that's exactly, it's like you, you sell this, so like suppose, point eight nine, say 500,000, just throwing a number, like, you know, you may get 1.2 acres somewhere else or 1.5 acres. So the number of units increases, and it is within the Morrisville jurisdiction, so anywhere in Morrisville does not matter. It will be, you know, that's what the whole jurisdiction is, doesn't have to be here where the best value for money is for some other use because of such a high traffic. It would just gain more momentum for any, some commercial or some other use, and, and take it and move it somewhere else. That's just my thought process. I think we are trying to reverse engineer just because of the land that we have and then trying to fit it, you know, it's a parallelogram or trapezoid. Why do we care? Like, you know, like, if we just use our equity, go buy somewhere else. That's just my thought process because that's the best buck for the money.
I guess the, I totally get what you're saying. However, I think the draw to using this parcel land is its closeness to what will eventually be the Town Center. And for the individuals that would be living here, they would be in a walkable area where they could walk to the Town Center, walk to the park, walk to the greenways. I think we would be hard-pressed to sell this and be able to find another parcel of land that would still ha, be close to the Town Center where it'd be walkable for a similar price, or even be able to get a larger plot of land.
We did not marry that we will be having affordable housing near downtown. I don't know if anyone in the council talked about that. It's basically anywhere close to, yeah, you, you...
We have.
I mean to say, this, we are doing a reverse engineering. I feel like, you know, we have trails everywhere, we have accessibility almost any place in Morrisville where we can do residential. I'm, I'm just, you know, kind of curious why not repurpose, only sell it when you have another piece of land. I get it. So don't sell it and then sit on it with nothing to do.
So have we, so have we even, there were other properties not too far from this that were for sale, so have we, I guess we have not explored that option at all.
We have, we have not explored any attempt to purchase property for the purpose of affordable housing. That was not the direction we've had.
No, it was not.
The direction was to look at, you know, what do we have? Could it work as a, as a first step? And then I think if that's the direction of council, then, then staff could certainly do that.
Councilmember Skoggins Johnson?
So I've been asking for affordable housing for years. I wanted affordable housing to be in the Town Center. We didn't get the support for affordable units in the rental framework for the building that's going to be downtown. We are only able to get a few developers to offer voluntary below-market price units for people that qualify. So we have been asking about affordability, but affordability is, you have to have walkable areas. We can't be just putting affordable housing on the outskirts. Cars are expensive, transportation is not accessible, food is not accessible. It's, we'll also have to have the conversation of, is it just 80% or below A M I? Or are we targeting for this area 60% or below? Or are we targeting 70% or below? Because that does affect some of these discussions and the proximity of where we want this initial project to be. I think we should have an initial project of eight to 10 homes because that will make an impact. One to two, just, it's, you know, it's been a long time since we had a Habitat home in this town. We're approaching, you know, 15, 20 years, right, Liz? So we want to make sure that we're...
10-plus. No, we have four.
And those are not accessible to transportation. So I'm, I, I understand the, the land swap idea and I appreciate it, but I'm just cautious that we're going to lose some value in that process.
I think there's a lot of value having that affordable housing close to downtown Town Center.
And also, don't forget, Vicky, that one of the things that we talked about with the, when the Wake County people were here was that, once we, once it's known in the development community that we are a community that wants to support affordable housing and wants to see projects that include that, there are developers that want to do that. So if we build it, they'll come and then they'll do future developments here. So, like, I, you know, I mean, I'm agreeing with you, but I'm just saying, it's, you know, that we, when we do something like this, I think that's when we start really attracting the Wake County developer that wants to work with us.
Michelle?
If I could, I wanted to go back to Council Member Garamell's original question about highest and best use that really kind of spurred this conversation. I don't know if I could tell you what the highest and best use is. The Land Use Plan, however, which guides development in this area, does recommend... does recommend small lots, single-family detached. So, what, the, the concepts that you're looking at are in line with what your land use plan recommends for this area. I would also echo some of what I've heard from other council members. We had preliminary conversations with Habitat, and the location, the walkability, that was attractive to them.
I don't think this is the only places we can continue to try to find more land. I don't think we have to give this up in order to get more. Because these, this is not the end-all of the units that we're going to be creating in Morrisville. So, I'm hopeful that this council will support future land purchases that we can work with Habitat for, rather than either-or. I would definitely support that. But if we could get some clarification, how do you feel about 201 and right across from the Historic Christian Church? So...
This is the only one I like, because, because the other one is not the best buck for the money. And it's too early to go near opposite Historic Church, because we don't have the plans. We don't know what we're getting into. In the future, if it looks, yeah, it can blend into it, but right now, it's too early to do any of those things.
Thank you. Councilmember Boddy? I think we heard from, I don't think we heard from Steve. Steve, your thoughts on 101 to 105?
I feel like if you're going to have affordable housing, you need to have more than just one unit. So, I like the concept of having it on Church Street. Although, Councilmember Garamell got me thinking about, you know, selling the land and then finding another place. But I, I mean, I'd like to look at this concept further. The concept would be, be, um, something...
Okay, so, no to 201, yes to this, and across from Historic Christian Church? No. Okay. Did we miss anything, staff?
And, and just to add, the advantage of also having this, obviously, the pros and cons. The advantage is, it will set an example to the people who drive down Morrisville Carpenter, that it will be visible. From, from that point of view, this is a good location. But my thought process was the best buck for the money. But there is added merit to this, too.
Okay, just to make sure we have complete clarity. Town council's good with us moving forward with 103, 105 Church Street? And you're good with us moving forward with both options, and essentially letting our partner decide which route they would like to go?
Correct.
Single-family or town home?
I would, I would go for town home, best buck for the money. Single-family is not...
It'd be good to see.
Yeah, let them decide.
Well, let them suggest, I would think. Because I think we had a discussion about values, whether or not we want to get more units in there, or higher quality.
I disagree, like, town home is not lower quality.
No, I mean...
Okay, let's be honest.
Quality of life, a little more yard, a little separation.
But it's affordable housing, okay.
True. And it will be good quality either way, but it's a number of units, I guess, that we're, our goal is.
So, when you, when you, you're going to have to write up some criteria for them. So, I think the criteria, the wording, you know, bring us a good option. I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to okay it or, or not. We still are in the driver's seat. It's our property. So, you know, something to bring us the, a quality product that gives us the most amount of, I don't want to say the most amount, because that would maximize, and I don't like, but taking in account the, the challenges of the location. Something to that effect, I don't know.
If it's reasonable for them to bring us both options, that's great. If they need us to choose one in advance, let us know. Yeah, exactly.
They might come up with something better, yes.
This will be a collaborative partnership, so...
So, and in terms of next steps, so, y'all would like us to work with Habitat? Or would you like us to find another partner, or research other partners?
Are we required to RFP this, or how is that going to work?
We're not, I don't think we're required to. We have looked into that. But if you want us to potentially work with Habitat, we could start having those conversations. Yeah.
And cost more money.
Well, it wouldn't cost us any money, but I, I would prefer to do an RFP to go, I, we do RFPs all the time. We don't, even when we pick single development, we didn't just single out a developer. We did an RFP to have people submit their best ideas, and then we choose. I, I, that's just a process we always do, and I prefer that, quite frankly. No, this is no reflection on Habitat, because I think they're a fabulous organization.
It would...
I'm still looking for the best product.
Potentially, rather than an RFP, maybe it'd be more of a RFQ, request for qualifications, and then we would be making that determination based on that. Yeah, that's tough. I don't, I really don't know either. I mean, I think in terms of, certainly in terms of single-family type stuff, you know, Habitat does a lot of that.
You're probably also thinking, I know, DHIC does some work as well. They do a lot more multifamily work. We've talked to them about, they really don't do, they do have, like, a little project with some homeownership, but generally not in that area. However, you may see some other, it could be for-profit or other smaller nonprofits, or different developers that might include affordable housing components into projects that might, you know, have some interest. But yeah, definitely Habitat, it's their niche.
I like Habitat a lot. They're a known quantity. I think our residents would support us moving forward with this, with them immediately. So, I would support just going with Habitat right now. I don't think we have to go through a whole RFP process. That's going to take a while, or even an RFQ. It would be very special. Anyone else want to weigh in on the choice of developer?
I, I don't have a problem with Habitat. I think the model is good, and I like the fact that they have some deed restrictions that would keep the, the property affordable in perpetuity.
Okay, so, Anne, you're good with Habitat, too, or? Does staff have what they need?
We do, yeah. I mean, I think it would make the most sense for us to start having those conversations with them, and then, you know, come back to you all at a, at a later date.
Yeah, talking with them is not a commitment. I mean, talking with them is a conversation that if, if we come back and you're not comfortable with what you're hearing or seeing, you know, you're, you're only going to be started down that path. You could always stop, retreat, replan.
Okay.
But this, this lets it get going. I think this, this lets us, lets us, lets the staff doing the work, come back to you with, you know, some, from further definitions, some, here's what, here's what the, the experts that do this feel like you should consider. So, I think they, y'all got what you need to do that. So, thank you.
This has been a really good discussion. I'm so proud of us for moving this forward. Good job, everybody. You guys all set? Done? Okay, great job. Great presentation. Yeah, affordable housing on its way. Excellent, good. Thank you very much. So, we are, let's go into closed session, then we can take a quick break if we need it. Just saying, let's go ahead and let staff go. Oh, really? Okay. So, let me just say these things. We have one closed session this evening to discuss economic development. As we have no plans for public business after the closed session at this time, we would like to thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org, or visit www.morrisvillenc.gov/council for additional contact information. At this time, I would ask for a motion to enter into closed session. Motion, a second. All those in favor of entering closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
No, we do. Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously 7-0. We are now in closed session. It is 9:48.